I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order, I show 7:02. First item on the agenda is approval of some minutes. Uh, I will take the workshop minutes of November 4th first, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes, is read.
I have a motion.
Steve here.
This is Carolyn.
I have a motion, I have a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uriel, yes.
Prelit, yes.
Mike, yes.
Chumshina, yes.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Then I would take, I'd take a motion on the regular meeting of November 4th.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from the meeting of November 4th.
I have a motion.
Uh, Lindelof, second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uriel, yes.
Prelit, yes.
Mike, yes.
Chumshina, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Moving on, to old business, first item on the agenda. Master plan, four lot, seven unit, major land development project, Fairview Estates. AP-18, lot 7K, 66 Fairview Avenue, Shoreline Properties, Inc., applicant. The applicant out there?
Yes, I just need, uh, Patrick, I just need Patrick to unmute himself. You would do that by pressing star nine.
Can you see me? Hello, I'm here with, uh, my name is Patrick Freeman from American Engineering. I'm here with Joe Cattelli, the applicant.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, and also Jeff Cafrey of Restick and Cafrey. Um, also here on behalf of the applicants, Joseph Cattelli and Patrick Freeman.
Very good, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I thank you for your attention this evening. Uh, as you're aware, we're here tonight on a proposed cluster development. We're seeking to subdivide an existing lot into a four-lot, uh, cluster development. The resulting properties would house, uh, three duplex units and a single-family property. Uh, the resulting lots would meet all of the dimensional requirements of a cluster development in an RFR zone, and would also provide substantially more open space than otherwise required by the ordinances. As a result of our, um, pre-application meetings, uh, the applicant, myself, and Mr. Freeman have undertaken to address some of your concerns, um, with the revised plans that are before you this evening. Uh, I know in particular, the board was concerned about the lack of 100-foot buffer zone, and that members were also concerned about preserving access to, uh, Witch Rock located to the rear of the property. Uh, we have met with members of the Conservation Commission on-site and, um, had discussions regarding the preservation of Witch Rock, and included in with your materials this evening is what I believe is a favorable recommendation, uh, from the Conservation Commission. Uh, we've also worked pretty closely with representatives of Crossman Engineering as part of their peer review to attempt to address some of the other issues that were raised at the, uh, pre-application meeting. Uh, at this point in time, I'd like to call, uh, Patrick Freeman into the conversation so Patrick can address whatever concerns the board had, uh, regarding the 100-foot buffer zone. Patrick?
Uh, hello, my name's Patrick Freeman. Uh, regarding the 100-foot buffer zone, we were reduced it to 30 feet. We are requesting to reduce it to 30 feet in the area south of lots 1, 2, and 3, in the area north of lot 4, as well as the proposed private road. Um, in addition, we provided a 40-foot no-cut buffer to the proposed lots, um, to, and proposed landscaping to restore, uh, restore the open space to the north of the proposed private road. This reduction, along with providing minimum lot sizing, allows us to avoid the wetlands and contiguous woodland area to the east of the development. Like Jeff said, we, uh, to compensate for this, we provided 6.99 acres of open space
Anything left of that presentation?
Um, so I have some things in addition to mention, um, other than just that 30-foot setback. Um, so, the, uh, the proposed road in our discussions with the Crossman, in the pre-app stage, we were requesting to reduce the 2.5% requirement within 150 feet of the intersection. We did redesign that road to town standards, um, which required us to cut, um, into that hill quite a bit more, but we were able to design it that way. Um, the drainage system we also designed, we, we discussed with Crossman, um, their comments had been attached to this proposal. Uh, the design has been, uh, we designed it to meet both the town and EM standards. Um, being the 1, 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm, there's no increase in peak runoff rate for those storms. Um, that should be all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss anything with you.
Um, thank you very much. Uh, so what, what we can do is, uh, why don't we hear from the planning board members first? And then I'd, I'd like to hear from Jim specifically with regards to a recap of the Crossman concerns. Is Crossman in the audience this evening?
They are.
Outstanding. Uh, okay, so maybe I can just go directly to them at the appropriate time. So, planning board members, uh, do we have questions of the applicant and/or their representatives on this application this evening?
Uh, Ron Prelit's here, I have no questions at this point.
I need to unmute me.
Keith here, same thing, no questions right now.
That's all I, I guess, just now. I guess he's muted.
This, this is Carolyn, I'll, uh, I'll hold off on any comments until we end.
They must have him muted. He's saying, they need to unmute me.
This is Emily, um, I will also...
Sorry, Mr. Cafrey, you, you muted yourself, I didn't, you, you, you have to now press
Uh, so Emily, you were about to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna defer until we hear from Crossman, um, any other comments I had.
Got it. So I, I do have a comment or a question. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it up to the applicant and their representatives as to who is most appropriate to field the question, but let's return to the issue of the 100-foot buffer. So I see that you've provided what you think is adequate, and I also appreciate your additional 40-foot no-cut buffer. Now, explain to me why we don't have a 70-foot buffer area instead of breaking it into these two distinct elements?
The reasoning behind that is, is the, the location of the proposed road, um, it's at the lowest, well, it's, it's, from a grading standpoint, um, the further towards that northerly property line you go, the less hill you're gonna have to cut into to get the proposed road through there. If you were to move that road another 40 feet south, you'd be looking at, and this is a guess, 12-foot to 15-foot cuts into that hill to get through, um, that portion. So our, our reasoning was to provide additional open space as well as some additional plantings in the buffer area that was disturbed previously, um, to provide buffer for that area without having to cut 15 feet into the hill.
Yes, I, I remember that discussion, perhaps I didn't explain my question clearly enough.
Sure.
So specifically, if we look at, say, this, the southerly boundary.
Okay.
You show a 30-foot buffer shaded.
Okay.
And then, on top of that, there's a half 40-foot no-cut buffer.
Okay.
My question is, why don't we just have a 70-foot buffer in that area?
As opposed to having a 30-foot open space, or, um, I think I understand your question. My, my, my reasoning there is we needed the area for the lots to meet the minimum lot areas without pushing those lots further into the rear of the lot or the easterly portion. So, we use that, that area of that 40-foot no-cut buffer in the parcel area, um, as opposed to making a 70-foot open space, which would essentially, um, flatten that area that we can use and push the lots further to the east.
Okay, that, that's, yep, that's the explanation I needed. So now, with regards to the no-cut buffer area, uh, forgive me if I didn't catch this in the documentation, but
Sure.
Has there been, uh, language that clarifies the conditions of the no-cut buffer?
Uh, we have not provided anything other than the statement that nothing is to be cut there, um, we can add it.
So as, yep, so as a comment, you will flesh that out in greater detail. Obviously, we can't let the word 40-foot no-cut buffer stand as all that we're going to say, though this would be, uh, this will essentially be a restriction on each of the lots. So, the lot owners will need to be very clear on what they're buying into, this will be a condition, this will be embedded in their deed as well as on the flat, we're all clear on that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yep, very good. And, uh, the only other concern I had was in reading through Crossman's, uh, report, uh, concerning the drainage area, uh, but I, I think we'll get to that when Crossman comes online.
Okay.
So with that, I'm good, uh, in terms of questions. Uh, I would like to have Jim step in and give us his perspective at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphia, Town Planner. I'd like to start, uh, very, uh, basically here, and I just want to mention that the applicant provided a conventional layout that provided for, um, six units. The applicant seems to be, seems to prefer the cluster, as well as the town seems to prefer cluster designs. So we, we have a cluster calculation that also confirmed that the parcel can handle six dwelling units. Now, given that this is a major subdivision, the inclusionary zoning ordinance kicks into play where 20%, um, you multiply six times 20%, you get 1.2, so we need to, we need to have actually seven units here. So my question for the planning board is, uh, what your preference is for the configuration of these seven units? Now, according to state law, uh, the developer has the option of either providing, um, onsite affordable housing, that one unit onsite, or offsite, or a fee in lieu of providing them. So I don't know, I don't know really what the preference is of the developer at this point, but we have to consider the fact that in our subdivision regulations, it says that no more than 50% of the, uh, development can be duplexes. So what we have here on paper right now in a cluster is we have three, we have four lots, three duplexes, and one single-family home. So, is this something that the planning board wants to entertain, or, because the, the regulations state that a maximum of, uh, says here, in regards to density and mix of types of units, the planning board will consider a maximum of 50% of a cluster for duplex or townhouse units. The balance would be for single-family homes. So, I, I guess my, my thinking here is, um, the applicant could probably go back and do a conventional if the planning board, uh, authorized them to, um, but I, again, the cluster has some advantages by preserving the access in the, um, on the eastern portion of the property, Witch Rock, and et cetera. So, um, I just want to lay that out for the planning board's preference right now, because that's real, a, a good place to start here. So.
Very good, Jim, thank you. So listen, my question is, that language seems to be pretty straightforward. If the planning board embraces what's being presented this evening, what, what's our mechanism for, I don't, I don't want to use the term skirting that language, but, uh, dealing with the regulation?
If I could, if I could address that, uh, Jeff Cafrey again. Uh, a, as I read your inclusionary zoning ordinance, in, in how you define the density bonus, I, I mean, I, I think the authority exists for the planning department to grant us additional units above that would, which would otherwise be permitted under the ordinance. That's the exact language from your inclusionary zoning ordinance. So I think you have the authority to do that if we're providing you with an inclusionary
Jim Lamphia, Town Planner, I would agree with that, however, let's put the inclusionary unit aside for one second. We still have six units that you're, um, proposing to put here, and you at least have two duplexes. So, are, are we talking, again, first of all, I, I think, I think our regulations could be written a little bit clearer, um, are, are we referring to lots or, or a number of units? Uh, I would tend to, I would tend to weigh in on, we're looking at the number of units here, is that no more than 50% of six, which would be three, which you're not gonna put in two duplexes anyway. Uh, so I don't know how that would, uh, how that would play out. I suppose you could put, I suppose you could put two duplexes on there, you know, three units and two duplexes, put the inclusionary in the, as the fourth unit in the two duplexes, but that gives you four units, and I guess you'd have two other lots for single-family homes on them, so that, that, that only gets you to six, it doesn't get you back up to seven.
That, that wouldn't then give us the, the density bonus? Because we would be entitled to a seventh unit under the, under the ordinance, as, as I interpreted, anyway.
That, that is correct.
So that would then, in turn, if we're able to use the third duplex, that would give us the mechanism to get to the seventh unit.
Well, you're proposing right off, I mean, just forget the inclusionary for a second, you're proposing two duplexes, which is four units. So four is more than half of seven.
That's correct.
So, I, I agree with you, the inclusionary gives the planning board the power to, uh, reduce lot sizes or configure it in whatever manner they have to, to get that extra unit on the property. But I guess, before I even get there, I want to know how, how you propose to put your six on the property. Let's say, let's say we didn't even bring up inclusionary. What you have on paper is three, three duplexes and a single-family home. How do you do that without the planning board granting a waiver, which I, I believe they, they probably could do, I'll leave it up to the planning board and, and Sean to say, but I, I believe that the planning board has the power to waive their regulations in the interest of good planning here, but, uh...
So Jim, that was my thought exactly. So, if this, provided that the planning board members feel that the cluster arrangement that's being presented is superior and has positive attributes, could the applicant weave a waiver into their application for the planning board's consideration?
I would say yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, it, it's a major subdivision to begin with, so we don't have to worry about bumping up a minor to a major for, to accommodate a waiver, we're already at a major, so I would say weave it in.
Okay, so that means, though, that the application now has to be, uh, let me use the term amended, to incorporate a waiver for the planning board's consideration, if I've got that mechanism straight in my mind.
I concur with that.
Okay. The applicant on board with this thinking?
Y-yes, I, I, it makes perfect sense.
Okay. It, it, I think it affords the vehicle to get folks where they need to be, again, the, the caveat here is that the planning board members, uh, feel that what's being proposed has got enough positive attributes to it to make it fly.
Sure, thank you.
Jim, anything else to add to me all?
Yes, uh, I, I just wanted to revisit, I, did I hear Patrick Freeman say, uh, state that the road is designed to town standards, and I just want to confirm that this is gonna be a private road as opposed to a public road?
Patrick, you there?
He muted himself, he will have to unmute himself by pressing star six.
Star six.
You're, you're unmuted, Patrick, you can go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Um, yes, so we did update the road, we made it two feet wider, and we also, uh, we, uh, we met the town standard with that, that 2.5% slope, so we, we updated it per the recommendation of Crossman. And, and it is still gonna be private, that is correct.
Okay, and all the, uh, uh, maintenance, um, of the drainage facilities will be done privately as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'd just like to mention that I won't, I don't want to take, uh, Mr. Cabral's, um, report away, but I guess, I guess, uh, Steve still has an issue with, um, stormwater flowing out the Fairview, and I think he's recommending to tie into the existing catch basins that are there, um, as opposed to using the, um, infiltration basin. So I'll, I'll let Steve address that. I think that's all I have for now.
Very good, Jim, thank you. Sean, uh, before we get to engineering, is there anything from your end that we need to hear about?
Sean?
Okay, no response. So, uh, we'll get, we'll get back to that. Uh, so is Steve Cabral out there?
Yes, Steve, please press, uh, star nine. All right. And now, please press star six. And then state your name for the record.
Oh, good evening, this is Steve Cabral with Crossman Engineering of 151 Centerville Road, Warwick, Rhode Island.
Thank you, go ahead.
Steve, 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 welcome aboard.
Oh, thank you, it's good to be here.
So, uh, we, we've received your report, I was wondering if you could just give us a quick walkthrough, please?
Oh, yes, thank you, and I will say that American Engineering has been responsive over the past few months. We have spent quite a bit of time going back and forth on drainage and the road design, and, except for one, well, except for issues associated with the buffer that you all have already addressed, I only had one remaining drainage comment, but bef- before I get into the drainage, I would like to touch on the roadway profile, and the reason is, Patrick did originally submit a roadway profile that did minimize cutting into the hillside, but he wasn't meeting the, the 2.5% in proximity of Fairview. Now, there are cases where we would normally agree with that to minimize cut, but our concern on this site is that we have about a 300-foot to 400-foot length of roadway that's at 8%. So we felt that it would be more of a safety benefit to have that landing for winter conditions as opposed to minimizing the fill. So that's why we had recommended that, that they designed the road to meet town standard for, solely for safety in the winter. In, in regards to the buffer, you've all already discussed 100-foot buffer, but there was one other, uh, buffer I just wanted to touch on. The ordinance also recommends a 50-foot buffer to, uh, between a home and a public street. And along Fairview Avenue, in that 50-foot buffer, there's going to be the proposed water quality pond sand filter, which is essentially a detention pond, and then there's a limited landscape buffer which appears to be only about 10 feet. So, I understand why the buffer has been minimized, and that reason is, along Fairview Avenue, that's the lowest point, so you need to have the detention facility at the lowest point to capture as much of the runoff as possible. But from the beginning of the discussions, e- even though American has been very responsive, and I respect everything they've done, if at all possible, we would recommend more than that single row of vegetation along Fair, Fairview, and see if the town could gain a little bit more of a buffer along Fairview. In regards to the drainage design itself, American did design the drainage system to meet the town and state standards, uh, but our concern is that even though they're meeting standards by not increasing the discharge, the concern we have is the location of the discharge. The way the system is designed is, the runoff from the roadway is gonna be collected in catch basins. The catch basins will be piped to a sediment for bay which will overflow into a water quality pond, and during the severe storm events, the water quality pond will overflow into a level spreader, which will then flow directly onto Fairview Avenue. Now, the biggest concern we have is that, the, the way the state regulations are is they really don't address winter conditions or rainstorms that occur during the early spring when the ground is still frozen, and what we see in those events are that there's very little infiltration because the ground's still frozen, and you tend to get more overflow. So we've recommended from the beginning that if there's any potential of actually piping the effluent of the water quality pond directly into a nearby catch basin or a nearby culvert, that will avoid any long-term safety condition with Fairview Avenue. We really would hate to see this built and then two or three years from now, end up creating a drainage problem or icing problem in Fairview Avenue. So we feel now is the time to certainly look at all the alternatives for the discharge point. And that, that's really the remaining drainage or design comment, because as I said, American has been very responsive over the past couple of mo, a few months, and they've made quite a few amendments to address our concerns.
Very good, Steve, thank you so much. Hey, so I've got a couple of questions to follow up on your concerns. So, let's, let's go with the profile concern first. So, if I understand your concern correctly, there's an 8% decreasing slope before we get to a 2.5% decreasing slope onto Fairview, Fairview Avenue?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Is that satisfactory, or are you looking for an amendment?
No, I feel the way it's designed currently meets town standards in the sense that they provide a 2.5% slope that's 150 feet long, so they do meet the town standards, and I do feel that's reasonable.
So, let me rephrase that question. Are we gonna have people skating out onto Fairview Avenue?
Well, even if the entire roadway was 2.5%, if it's iced over, people will slide, but this does meet typical standards. So what, as long as the roadway is out and maintained, that 150 feet is considered sufficient.
Okay, all right, so we won't go beyond that.
Yes, I mean...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I've been on a standstill on a roadway that's been iced over, and just the, the crown of the road, I've slid, but, but the design that's presented is a safe design.
Okay, that's what we need to hear. All right, let's go to the, uh, offering idea at the drainage area. So, I hear your concern, a single row of whatever they've got there is probably never gonna be adequate. Uh, I'd love to just suggest that they double it and offset it, but as I look at the grading, would they have room to do that? Because it appears that the doubling and offset would then be in the grading of the water quality pond. What do you think?
Yes, what would have to occur is, the single-family home in the septic, everything would have to shift eastward, you know, to, to gain that extra space. So basically, the water quality pond would shift east to accommodate the additional plantings.
Um, okay, so, uh, guide me a little bit here, before I make that kind of suggestion... Okay, so guide me a little bit here before I make that kind of suggestion. I mean, are we talking anything more than grabbing onto a bunch of poly lines and doing a move of 10 feet? Is it more complicated than that?
Well, for the designer, it would involve regrading parcel one. So yes, there is a little more to it. You know, there is a little more to it, but certainly I agree with you that in the long run, it would be best to maximize that buffer along Fairview.
Is that request like insurmountable? Or am I being reasonable in making the request?
I, well, as the town's consultant, I feel it is very reasonable, especially seeing they're seeking a waiver to the 50-foot buffer.
Okay, that's all I need. All right. And then your last item, the whole idea of connecting to the catch basin. So forgive me, I'm a little bit out of my league here. So I see an exit point to the water quality pond kind of at its southwesterly corner. Do I interpret that correctly?
Yes. Well, actually, and Patrick, you could confirm. I don't have the plan in front of me. I believe there is an overflow at the, yes, at the northwesterly corner and that overflow flows into a level spreader that allows the effluent to spread out so that when it does flow into Fairview, it flows in a sheet flow manner. So the width of the flow may be 100 feet wide or so.
Can I weigh in on that? Just to clarify?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So that's actually, that's an emergency overflow set six inches above the 100-year ponding elevation of that pond, just a direct flow in case of, you know, beyond 100-year storm, if that pond ever fills up that high.
Okay.
And to provide a little additional clarity, those catch basins, when we did our field inspection, they appear to be cisterns. There's two pipes coming out of each of them in line with Fairview Avenue that don't appear to go anywhere. So without actually lifting the lids, which were very heavy, we believe they're an actual infiltration system as opposed to routed to another catch basin where they go elsewhere. So that's the dilemma we're running into there and why we didn't.
I understand.
Yes, and we, yes, and we had also inquired as to whether or not there was any culverts beneath Fairview Avenue nearby that could be tied into. And again, as I mentioned, American designed this in full conformance to the DEM standards for sizing the pond, but we always have to recognize that that's based on the assumption that they're maintained 100% perfectly. So I am concerned that even though on paper, the overflow will be minimal in all likelihood and practicality, the overflow will be more frequent than the design just because of the delays in maintenance. So again, if at all possible, we'd like to avoid an overflow into Fairview.
Yeah, I understand. But Steve, candidly, if the representation is accurate, that those catch basins that are located northwesterly of this facility are just holes in the ground, what's the benefit of asking the applicant to connect to those? What are we getting out of this?
Yeah, the other question was if the applicant's engineer inspected the area to see if there are any other culverts nearby that could be connected into. So our question was, were there any catch basins or cross culverts that could be utilized?
During the performance of the fieldwork, we didn't find any culverts that crossed Fairview in proximity to that area. And we didn't find anything, obviously, that piped in any direction to tie into.
Okay, so that option is not there. Steve, what else do you have for me?
Okay. Well, say the worst case, that there were no options, there would still be a benefit of connecting to the cisterns because if that theoretical overflow occurs and it is a low flow, having the cisterns capture as much as they can handle would still be beneficial, especially in, say, a winter condition. You know, when the storms may not be severe, yet the bottom of the ponds are frozen, there would, as a minimum, be a trickle of overflow. And I would believe that those cisterns could handle that trickle, which could prevent a icing issue. So the more we keep off the road...
I understand. Go ahead.
All right. As an alternative, Steve, we did propose a infiltration practice on our lot at the, as you can see, catch basin six and seven. As an alternative, would it be reasonable to, see, I don't know how you'd be able to maintain the flow pattern of catch basins delivering to a four bay, which overflows to a water quality pond and then somehow redirect stormwater instead of to the level spreader to an underground infiltration practice with a backup of a level spreader. I don't know how you'd actually get that to work.
Oh, Patrick, that would be, or if I may, Patrick, that would be having a conduit from, running from the level spreader to the infiltration system.
Okay. That's more reasonable.
That's right, man.
Yeah. I got ahead of myself.
And I do, yep. And I do agree that if the existing structures in Fairview are drywells, as long as your new drywells were appropriately sized, that would be a very good alternative.
Okay.
Okay, so if I got that correctly, you're going to do some kind of diversion into catch basin six and seven out of the water quality pond?
It would be out of the level spreader to catch basin seven. We can route that, we can add a standpipe to that below the level of, or some sort of grate below the level of the level spreader and we can pipe that to catch basin seven to provide some additional treatment.
All right. That sounds like that's been addressed. Okay, so listen, we've heard from planning board members, we've heard from Jim. Sean, are you still out there?
Yes, I am.
Here we go. Anything from the legal perspective we need to hear about?
Not at this time.
Very good. Thank you so much. All right. So there's legal. We've heard engineering. I'm prepared to go to public comment at this time.
If you remember, the public who would like to make a public comment, please press star nine. We don't have anyone in the audience, Al.
Okay, very good.
Al, this is Carolyn.
Yes, yes, yes.
What's weighing on my mind is that these three duplexes are going to be rental property with one of these units being for low moderate income? And am I correct?
I'm not sure that those are intended as rental properties. I mean, it's maybe owner occupied in one half and rental on the other side. I think that's not yet determined.
Okay, Carolyn, what's your concern?
My concern is that this is a private road. There are septic systems. There's just a lot of maintenance money when I look at this. And I'm concerned that if it's not rental, if it is rental property, who's going to bear the cost of maintaining things like the septic and the roadway? And if they're not going to be rental property, then the developer is prepared to go to Rhode Island Housing and get the proper approval for a low-income unit to be sold? Is that what we're talking about?
I think you're raising two separate issues there relative to the cost of maintaining the area. I mean, it's recommended and I'm sure we're going to be required to do an HOA. We have a budget built in. Hello?
I'm sorry.
So at some point in time, we would have to present some HOA documents that would basically require that everybody contribute towards the cost of maintaining the road. The septic systems are going to be all self-contained, so it wouldn't be any different than any other homeowner requirement, namely that they maintain a septic system.
Okay, I'm on board with that. And so one of these houses would be low-income mod and the others would be market rate and it would be homeownership responsibility to contribute to the HOA. That clarifies everything for me.
Great.
Al, we do have two members of the public who'd like to comment.
Yes, let's hear from the public and then I do want to go back to the planning board members who deferred their comments. Go right ahead.
All right. So I'm going to read the last four digits of this person's phone number. When I'm done, please state your name for the record. 4432. And to unmute yourself, you press star six.
Hi, am I on now?
You are indeed. Please state your name for the record.
This is Cynthia Johnson, Hope Valley.
Go ahead.
Welcome, Cynthia.
Hi. The Hockenden Land Trust, of which I'm a member, walked out on this property with Mr. Cattelli back in March and had some pretty interesting conversations with him and about the protection of the witch rocks, which are hunting back on what will be the open space in the rear of the property. And it is the desire of the land trust to preserve that land, culturally, historically important property, and very dear to a lot of people, a lot of people here in Hope Valley. So I think because the open space is the area just around the witch rocks that we're interested in, and we have had this conversation with Mr. Cattelli, we would like to support that. We are further interested in working with Mr. Cattelli in the future to try to plan for controlled public access via the Cul-de-sac, not a general public access, but something that we can discuss in some kind of controlled way. That's it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
No, thank you for your comments. Someone else out there?
Nope.
Oh, that was it?
There was another person, but they put their hand down, so.
Okay, no problem. All right. So let's return to planning board members. Some of you deferred your comments. I'd like to just take the opportunity to quickly return to see if you have anything else you'd like to add to the mix.
Okay, I'll go first. This is Ron. As I'm understanding this, the general consensus is if we offer a waiver or some sort of wave of the magic pen, they can accept what we're seeing on sheet five and from there on with the existing duplex, two new duplexes and a new single-family home. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ron.
Okay, I'm good with the design. I mean, Mr. Cabral answered all the questions that I would think would pop up. I think it's a nice-looking design and if everybody's good with it, I'm good with it.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else care to weigh in on this one?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, town planner. Can I just get clarification from the developer? Do you know which of those units is going to be the affordable unit at this point in time?
We don't. We haven't determined that yet.
Probably if it makes sense, it would probably be one.
We're most likely going to be on one of the units of the duplex for parcel four, which is the northeast parcel.
Okay, so if that's the case, will it be a condo or will it be a rental unit or?
Probably a rental because if someone buys that duplex, they'll have that restriction where they'll have to rent to qualify the affordable applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Planning board members, anyone else care to weigh in?
This is Emily. I just wanted to say I am supportive of the design. I was interested to know if a butters had thoughts about it, however, with respect to, you know, whether they are okay with the density or supportive of this level of density in their neighborhood. It's a neighborhood I'm not super familiar with, although I took a drive up here. So I was curious about public comment, but from a conceptual perspective, I appreciate the, you know, preservation of open space on the east side of the lot and I think that the density makes sense. It just was raised by Jim, the particular location of the affordable unit. Some more clarity about that would be appreciated. I don't fully understand how you can like demand that someone rent an affordable unit and how you have only one side of a duplex be affordable. I guess I don't understand completely how that affordable act works in that instance. So some more clarity and a clear plan for that would be appreciated in the next version.
Emily? I can tell you with research that, this is Carolyn, I'm sorry. I can tell you with some of the research that I've done, if there's an intention to build an affordable house, there has to be approval from HUD and there would be a commitment letter. As far as renting is concerned, once an owner buys the property, they decide that they're going to offer a rental unit up for affordable housing, they have to meet state guidelines, et cetera. But there is no guarantee that an owner buying the property is going to use it for low-income or moderate housing. There's no way to guarantee that. That was my reference, that they be prepared to go and get the unit committed by the state resources.
I'm not so sure I agree with that statement because a monitoring agency that oversees affordability unit and they have requirements as far as anybody to purchase and to rent that property.
That's right. And you also, you can offer the unit for rent, but the unit has to meet the guidelines for a low-income or moderate-income rental. That part you have to agree with.
They have guidelines as far as compatibility with the other units, if that's what you're referring to.
Oh, yeah. Compatibility with other units, but what you're talking about as far as low-income rental might involve vouchers, rental...
Whatever the monitoring agency requires.
Well, I suggest you take a look at what the monitoring agency would require and get familiar with it. I can tell you that we had a failed low-income housing development called Rockville. It was perpetuated by the known conditions that existed around the development and it ended up happening when that proposed structure failed for the tenant with that the housing monitoring agency gave all of the tenants rental vouchers to rent wherever they wanted, which means they left... which means they left Hockton. There's a lot to be considered when you're talking about low-income and rental unit, when you're talking about market rate versus low-income rate, you know.
There's going to be a 99-year restriction put on this property, so it's a matter of public record.
Jeff, if I can say one thing.
Sure.
Jeff, if I can say one thing, it's not low-income, it's affordable housing. There's a big difference. You know, this is meant for people, you get a certificate like she said, but it's affordable housing. It's not low-income. I don't like when people use that term, because it's meant for people that fit in whatever the guideline they're going to give us for the income and we'll get that from the housing authority. I'm pretty familiar with them. I've done quite a few of them now with my developments, where we either rent or sell. So they would have to get a certificate and they'd have to qualify. They'd have to bring, if I'm the owner or whoever the owner of the building, they would have to present that certificate to qualify.
True story, and if you're selling that affordable unit, then you have a 30-year date restriction as a mortgage holder. But we don't need to get into the semantics of that. I'm just saying that there are requirements and, you know, it's nice to see all of this stuff, but it's better to execute it. So I would only hope that we would have the promise of the developer that that low-income unit that we're talking about is in fact going to be targeted for low-income. And I would prefer to see it sold rather than rented, because you have a complicated situation with these being duplexes. And, you know, that's an interesting story that somebody else can figure out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, there's another member of the public who'd like to comment.
Okay, we'll take that one and that'll be the end.
All right, I'm going to state the last four digits. Please state your name for the record. And to unmute yourself, press star six. 1701.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Sheri Aronian. Sorry to come in on public comment after the planning board portion, but Carolyn had asked a question that prompted a question in my mind. If I could ask, I'm not quite sure who would answer it, perhaps one of the developer's agents, what is the approximate affordable housing market rate for 2020? I know it varies from year to year, you know, some years it's been 240,000, 250,000. I just don't know what it is and I was just curious as to what the affordable housing market rate average is for a purchase price.
Your question, Sheri, would be specific to the incomes that are in Hockington, Rhode Island, not the state of Rhode Island.
Right, that's.
Okay, but like when. Okay, so for Hockington, does anybody know what the average price point is for an affordable housing purchase in Hockington is?
I don't know what it is, no.
Okay, I was just curious. I didn't know, you know, what the approximate dollar amount for the house would be.
I can tell you an ex of them, because we just did, we just did eight of them in Exeter. And I don't know if that would be the same, you know, county, but it was based on 120% average medium income. And I had to do four at 120% and four at 80%, so it gave a good variety. And at the time, today, it was, it's 200,000 at 80% and it was 323 at 120%. So if you take the average of those two, that would be the 100%, so it would be right in the middle, probably around 240, 250, like you were saying.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
You're good, thank you.
We have one other person, Al. Do you want me to?
Yeah, okay, let's hear it.
All right, I'm going to state the last four digits, 0018. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Barbara Capalbo from Asherway, Rhode Island. I have a question, I think it's for Jim.
All right, go ahead.
Hello.
Yeah, I'm here Barbara.
Thank you. The single-family home in this process, if it had a mother-in-law apartment or an affordable, are they considered affordable apartments that can be rented? So that instead of having, you know, a condo side, whether the house had an affordable apartment, that could be considered affordable housing? Is that a possibility or is that not?
Good question. I think basically what we have is.
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
I can answer that. The answer is no.
Okay, I just wanted to finish hearing from Jim, if I could.
Okay. There are some state laws I can point you at if you want. I can email those to you, but in short, the answer is no.
Barbara, I don't know if you, do you want to hear Jim's response or?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear Jim's response, because I know it has been considered in other areas and that indeed when they have a mother-in-law apartment, it often is allowed to be, at least for families, considered affordable housing. So I'm sure Carolyn's right in certain instances, but there may be others where a family rents to its cousin or its nephew or a family member, but it's considered affordable housing, especially if it's disabled, if someone's disabled and needs the additional space and has to have, like, Section 8 housing. So I wondered if Jim would just answer that, because I think there are times that is allowed or it could be allowed.
It's called an accessory unit, an accessory dwelling unit, Barbara. And Jim can speak to that, but that's what we're referring to.
Yeah, they're called accessory family dwelling units and basically they're for a family member. Interesting question, I don't know. I think we'd have to get a Philadelphia lawyer to look at that one, but whether you're rented to your parents, your uncle or something like that, I don't know. Interesting question. I would say at the very least, it probably circumvents the intent of it. I mean, you know, I mean, we're trying to get, we're trying to get affordable housing to the general public who needs it, not that family members don't need it as well, but very good question, very good question.
And sometimes family members really do need it, because they can't live on their own. But it is a way to put affordable housing, but within a sold, owned, mortgaged, single-family dwelling. Thank you, Jim.
Hey, for the crowd out there, Hockington does have an ordinance that specifically speaks to accessory dwelling units. And it specifically says accessory dwelling units are only for blood members of a family. So when you talk about putting a unit on a bonus room on top of a garage, our own ordinance prohibits it from being considered for low-income housing.
There you go. Thank you, Carolyn.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else on this one?
No.
So I presume we're getting close to contemplating a motion. I just have a couple of summary thoughts that should the planning board decide to move forward, I would suggest these conditions. That the subsequent application needs to include a waiver with regards to the duplex. That I think the buffer near the proposed drainage area at Fairview needs to be expanded upon, specifically doubled and offset. And that there's going to be a drainage connection from that facility to Catch Basin 7. And that the next iteration of this needs to include detailed language for the no-cut, what are we calling it, no-cut buffer zone. So those are my thoughts. I'd be prepared to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, Tom Planner. Are you contemplating a motion to approve the master plan with those conditions? Or did you want to see?
I'm asking the planning board what they would like to do, but those would be the things that I would be looking for in the next iteration, whether it's revised master plan or.
Okay, okay.
Are we on the right track? Are we, are we good?
It's up to the planning board.
Okay.
This is Emily. It looks like from the memo that Jim provided us, that we have to make a decision on the master plan by January 24th, 2021. So I think we have a little bit of wiggle room to request some revisions to this draft master plan, including all the things you just mentioned, Al, and that would be my preference.
Would you care to put that in a motion?
Sure thing. I'd like to make a motion that we request the Fairview Estates seven-unit major subdivision at 66 Fairview Avenue, revise the master plan before us today to include a waiver with regard to the ratio of duplexes in the plan. That the Fairview Avenue drainage buffer be doubled and offset with a connection to Catch Basin 7 on Fairview Avenue and to include detailed language describing the no-cut buffer zone in the plan.
Standing, I have a motion.
Could I ask a question regarding the offsetting of the pond and the buffer before we move forward? Can I offer an alternative option? We'd be happy to provide additional buffering, but can I recommend that it be to the east of the ponds, in between Parcels One and that open space area? The reasoning there would be those ponds are flat relatively, there's a lot of contours, but from the street's perspective, there's not a lot of elevation in that 50 feet to see. So if you put that planting along Fairview Avenue and then put a line of plantings on the westerly side of Parcel One, you wouldn't need to move the pond and you'd increase the buffer in that area. Does that sound reasonable or?
Yeah, so let me just make sure I understand that. And Emily, I apologize for jumping in in the middle of a motion here. We're looking to screen the water quality pond.
Okay, so you're not trying to screen the single-family home?
Well, I'm looking at the contours here. I can't quite make out the proposed contours on Parcel One. Can you tell me what the elevation difference is between the top, the top of the pond on the west side looks like 130?
136.
Yep. What's the elevation of the Elgin in drains at Parcel One?
There's a 141 contour that goes over those Elgins.
So your proposal would say I want to do plantings what, around the toe of that slope, around the Elgins?
Correct. Correct. I think that that would provide buffering that would actually, I think it would help more. It would step the buffering process.
I understand.
Yeah, okay. Just to be clear.
I'd be prepared to accept additional buffering at the top of that slope.
Adjacent to the septic system?
Yes.
So there is a 10-foot setback from that septic system, but it would, you could potentially do that. The only thing I'd, from a landowner's perspective, that tree line would cut off probably 20 feet of their lot visually. That would just be one thing I would be concerned with, but we can definitely, that's what you want.
Well, listen, if we're going to try and buffer the project, it doesn't make any sense to put vegetation at the toe of the slope.
I agree.
So you have no choice. I would summarize this. I'd summarize it this way. You can either put additional buffering at the water quality pond and shift everything to the east, or you could do buffering at the top of the slope of Parcel One near the septic system.
Okay.
All I'm looking to do is soften the impact from Fairview Avenue.
Absolutely.
Emily, are you on board with that?
Yeah, that sounds good. I don't think that affects my motion.
So your motion could simply. Your motion could simply include a request to improve the buffering from Fairview Avenue and let the applicant decide how they'd best like the handling.
Okay, I'll restate just for the sake of getting everybody on the same page again. So I'd like to make a motion that the draft master plan for Fairview Estates, the seven-unit major subdivision at 66 Fairview Avenue, be revised to include a waiver with regard to the ratio of duplexes in the plan. That the view from Fairview Avenue needs to have adequate and additional buffering in what's proposed currently in the draft master plan, either by shifting the water quality pond east and increasing buffering at the street level or adding tree and vegetation material at the top of the slope in Parcel One at the discretion of the applicant. And finally, that the master plan include detailed language for the no-cut buffer zones throughout the project plan.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion.
Did you mention the Catch Basin? You had that in the first part of, in your first motion, but I don't think you mentioned it in the second one.
Oh, and a connection to the Catch Basin number seven on Fairview Avenue, apologies. Yeah, please insert that one, Natalia.
You got it.
Very good, thank you. Yep. So I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, Tom Planner. I just want to clarify that, does the board want to see this revised master plan come back to them in January? I thought that's what Emily wanted to do.
Yes, I believe that's the intention.
Okay.
Yep.
Emily, do I interpret that correctly?
That's correct.
Yes. So again, I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Area yes.
Roll with yes.
Blimble, yes.
Light, yes.
Shemshiniya, yes.
All good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to go to the next agenda item.
We should be.
Okay, so for this item, I'm going to recuse myself, as I have in the past, and Tricca has been a client of my firm's in the past, although I am not involved with this project at all. I have previously submitted today a notice of recusal to Talia, who has received it. If not, it'll be in the file and I would respectfully request Ron to take the reins on this one.
Okay, I accept. Okay, shall we begin?
I'll take that as a yes. Good evening, folks. Again, as last time, I requested everybody keep their comments to five minutes or less. This is an excitable topic. So I seem to be in a position to get people kind of charged up and enthusiastic, which is a good thing. But let's just kind of keep a little bit of control on it. Okay, do we have the applicant or their representative here?
Yes. I'd like all of you to press star nine, please. All right, you can press star six, Steve and Jason. And then please state your names for the record.
Hi. Good evening, Talia, and members of the board. Attorney Stephen Sardet for the applicant.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jason Gold with ESS Group.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. As the board likely remembers, this will be our third meeting with the board and our second development plan review meeting. We have undertaken an extensive, and I would go so far as to call it collaborative effort with your staff members and specifically with Crossman Engineering, based upon the comments that we received the last time that we appeared before the board, as well as significant input from the abutters who have expressed an interest in being involved and are making direct comments to us. In fact, we had numerous onsite meetings with one abutter. And in fact, he submitted a letter as part of this application. We have submitted extensive materials to you in an effort to show you the detail that we have undertaken in coming before the board this evening. We understand that, as the acting chairman said, that these can be... That type of applications can be contentious, and we would like to very much show that we have spent extensive time and diligence in meeting the requirements of your application. I will have... I have a number of witnesses here this evening, most specifically Jason Gold, who you briefly heard from, as well as a landscape architect who has additionally submitted two plan sheets, which were included in our submission, as well as details regarding their extensive experience with these type of projects. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would very much like to have Mr. Gold, who's testified in front of this board numerous times in the past, give a brief overview of the extensive documents he submitted to the board.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Gold, if you would like to proceed, proceed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jason Gold. I'm the civil engineer with ESS Group. As Steve mentioned, there's been quite a bit of documents submitted. So to make the presentation easier, I did submit a presentation set. If you're reviewing these online, it's the link titled "40 Maxon Hill Road Solar DPR Presentation 111920." If you have the paper copies in front of you, these are the documents with the big red letters in the top corners. Starting with Exhibit A, this is an aerial overview of the site and the project. Now, the project... The property is a 25-acre property on the eastern side of Maxon Hill Road. It's owned RFR 80 and defined as a large farm under the Farm Viability Ordinance, which we discussed at the May meeting. The property is primarily wooded. There is a single-family home and a approximately 1,750-foot square foot garage as well. The topography in the project area slopes southwesterly towards the driveway and Maxon Hill Road. There are some wetlands on the southern portion of the property. That's on the far end of the property. You can see it's on the far end, far away from the actual project area. The property is not located within any historic district, state-designated scenic areas, unfragmented forest tracks, natural heritage areas, or state-designated greenway corridors. It is located... Most of the project area and most of the site is within a primary protection zone, the exception of the eastern corner, which is within the secondary protection zone. Moving on to Exhibit B, this is drawing C1, taken from the full plan set that was also submitted. This is very similar to the concept that we presented back in May. The design has been advanced with some additional details. We submitted in August incorporating feedback from the board that was received in May. And then we've also made some additional revisions since August based on feedback from the Towns Period of your Crossman Engineering, which reflected here. So Crossman, we have addressed their comments. The project has also been submitted and permitted by Rhode Island DEM. So the project is a relatively small, just half-megawatt DC ground-mounted photovoltaic solar energy system. The array area is about 1.3 acres within a 1.8-acre fence, interconnections on Maxon Hill Road. As is typical with these projects, the area within the fence will be grass. Some shade trees outside the fence will be removed, however, the existing ground cover will remain. As is shown in the plans, the project, the array, has been setback further than is required by the ordinance. It's beyond the property setbacks. The yard setbacks will remain vegetated. And in addition, a landscape screen has been added to the northeastern corner. And the landscape architect will explain that in more detail after my presentation is complete. You see the multiple gray lines cutting kind of diagonally across the array. That is something that's been added. Those are multiple... They're level stone trenches. And those have been designed to encourage sheet flow and control gully formation, since these are on a slope. So those are two-foot wide by one-foot-deep stone-filled trenches that are parallel with the contours. Exhibit C is taken from the drainage report. And I'm including this here because there were some questions about the stormwater runoff at the pre-odd meeting in May. So what this is showing is the drainage area. Now, it's actually the existing and the proposed drainage area are the same. And what this shows is that the stormwater runoff from this drainage area that drains across the project flows to the existing driveway and then down the driveway to Maxon Hill Road. There is no stormwater runoff from this project that flows onto any abutting properties. The stormwater modeling has demonstrated no significant change in the runoff characteristics, which means that there's no increase in runoff. And that drainage report has been reviewed and approved by both Crossman Engineering and Rhode Island DEM. Exhibit D, really D through G, the next few exhibits. These are photo simulations. There were some questions back in May from the board regarding the view of the project, especially from Maxon Hill Road. So this is a visual simulation that we conducted back in August prior to the last meeting. Exhibit D shows where the photograph was taken from. We took it from the driveway at Maxon Hill Road, as that's the most open area. Anywhere else on Maxon Hill Road is more wooded. So this, being the opening for the driveway, seemed like the most conservative area to take a photo. Exhibit E is the photo simulation. And so what you're looking at here is in the top-left corner, the existing view. That's the untouched photograph that was taken from that location, shown in the previous exhibit. And what we do is create a 3D model of the array. And we Photoshop out any trees that would be cut, whether they be shade trees or trees within the array, and then overlay the two to provide a view of the solar array. Now, looking at Exhibit E, you can't actually see the array. And that's kind of the purpose, is showing that the array is not visible from this area. Because you can't show something you can't see, we also provided Exhibit F. And this is the rendering. This is the 3D rendering without the photo overlay on top of it. So this rendering on Exhibit F is actually beneath the picture in Exhibit G. I'm sorry, Exhibit E. It's just not visible because it's blocked. So this shows that the array is not visible from even the driveway from Maxon Hill Road. Exhibit G I provided, I know a common question when we do these arrays, these photo simulations, is, "Well, what's it going to look like in the winter time when there's no trees?" You know, just based on the timing of the year. You know, we take these photographs based on the project, and it happened to be August when all the trees were in full condition, full leaf condition. But I did happen to have a picture that I took back in February when we were beginning this project. And this is Exhibit G's. It's not a photo simulation. It's just a photo I happen to have in the same general location as the photo that was taken for the simulation. It's pretty much the same area. But what this does is it shows you what it looks like in the winter time. And you can see there's still some evergreens there. And even the trees, without even the deciduous trees, just the density of branches and trunks offers some pretty good screening, too. And the landscape architect can speak to that in more detail, but that's just something that I wanted to just show you so that you could see it in both winter and summer conditions. So in summary, the project's been designed in accordance with the solar ordinance and the Farm Viability Ordinance. I'll just review some of those key bullets. All the distribution lines within the system will be underground, and that's up until the first utility pole. All the yard setbacks will be met, 60-foot front, 40-foot side, and 50-foot rear. A seven-foot-high chain-link fence will surround the system, and the bottom will be raised six inches above the ground. The gate will be locked with a Knox lock to provide emergency access. No exterior lighting is proposed. The panel heights will not exceed 12 feet above final grade, which is the maximum allowed in the ordinance. We're actually proposing a height of approximately nine feet. The existing vegetated buffer will be maintained within the yard setbacks. An additional screening will be provided on the north side. The equipment pad is outfitted with 125% secondary containment. And that's a stone trench lined with an impermeable membrane and a barrier that allows water but not oil through. The noise impact study was submitted in August. It's dated August 13th, 2020. And that demonstrates that sound levels are not expected to exceed 40 decibels at the property line. The levels of that study range from 4.2 to 34.5 decibels. An environmental impact statement was submitted. That's dated October 16th, 2020. And that found that the net effect of the proposed project is expected to be minor due to the small size and the grass habitat that's created. The system will not exceed two acres as required by the Farm Viability Ordinance. The project's also been designed to meet the Development Plan Review Standards. There's limited traffic. There's... As I'm sure you know by now, once these things are constructed, they're only visited occasionally throughout the year. The Knox lock is provided for emergency access, as I mentioned earlier. And the fire department has confirmed that the project can be accessed via the existing driveway. They have not yet reviewed the project overall, but they have at least confirmed that they can access the site via the existing driveway. No billings are proposed. No water supply, septic systems, or solid waste generation is proposed. The post-development stormwater runoff does not exceed pre-development runoff. And lastly, a soil origin sediment control plan has been provided. That includes filter socks, gravel berm, stabilization measures, et cetera. That is my overview, and I'm happy to take any questions on the engineering design before I hand it back to Steve and Tara Inc. to describe the landscaping.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gold. Planning Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Gold? I keep there. None at this time.
Yeah, same here for Carolyn. None at this time.
This is Emily. I have one minor question. Maybe this isn't for you, Jason. I'm not sure. In the operations and maintenance plan, it mentions a number of inspections happening at various intervals throughout the life of the project. What is the entity responsible for doing those inspections and the coordination with the town?
The owner of the system is responsible. So that would be Undertricca, who's operating the system.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can go on to the next presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Stephen Sardet. At this time, I would present Tara Inc., who is our landscape architect. And there are two professionals associated with that. You have their CVs, criturum vitae, included as part of our documents submitted to you, as well as two rather detailed plans, which have been included. So I would just very briefly also request that Ms. Cummings and Ms. Conley just briefly describe their professional credentials, and then I would ask that they be recognized as experts in their field.
Okay, thank you.
I'll need them to press star nine, please. Press star six, please.
Ms. Conley, if you could go first, and Ms. Cummings, if you could then follow up.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Conley. I'm one of the principals here at Tara Inc., a landscape architecture firm. I'm a registered landscape architect in multiple states. I am a visual expert for this New England region, dealing often with energy projects, alternative energy projects, and have a substantial understanding of this region, having worked within New England, especially Rhode Island, over the last several years.
Hello, my name is Jade Cummings. I also am the principal landscape architect at Tara Inc., licensed in several states, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts. And it is a pleasure to be here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that they be recognized as experts. And if you're a clerk and if you feel necessary, swear them in. And then they will describe the documents that they've submitted to you here tonight.
Yes, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Wonderful. May I proceed then?
Yes.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us attend the meeting this evening. As Jason has described, the Maxon Hill Road site is typically an Appalachian oak forest ecotone. a Appalachian oak forest ecotone with oak trees being the dominant canopy species on the site along with naples and pines. I'm going to talk a little bit about how I interpret the site and how we are working within it, just to sort of give you a sense of how I see the project area. In this type of woodland, there's typically a robust understory because the sunlight is able to reach the woodland floor versus the under heavy evergreen shade, which is beneficial in a project like this. Typical shrub species include, but are not limited to, dogwoods, Viburnums, Rhododendrons, as well as a rich matrix of grasses and herbaceous species. In a woodland of this nature, during the leaf season, you know, the green season of summer months, the tree cover is pretty visually dense from sky to grade due to the well-established canopy, understory trees, and the herbaceous vegetation. During the winter leaf off months, the view through the woodlands would still have a visual density due to the overlapping tree trunks and branching, as well as the understory shrubbery and sort of their nature and habit in branching. Therefore, when looking at Sheet L 301, which is our screen planting plan, we can anticipate that the vegetative buffers on the site that are maintained between the setback and the property line, and those are shown with a hexagonal hatch, will provide a level of visual screening in both summer and winter months. In addition, the undisturbed existing woodland vegetation that are outside of the limit of disturbance line, that's basically the white area on the plan with no hatch, and the retained understory between the seven-foot-high chain link fence and the limit of disturbance line, which is a hatch shown with small crosses, will contribute to the natural screening of the solar rays when viewing the project from the property line inward. To enhance the existing visual screening that I've just described, especially from 48 Maxon Hill Road, which is located in the upper right-hand corner of the plan, we've chosen to install a selection of eastern red cedars to provide evergreen screening in addition to the existing Appalachian oak forest matrix. We've utilized the eastern red cedars, which are noted in the University of Rhode Island Sustainable Tree and Shrub List, and the Hoppings and zoning bylaws, excuse me, Appendix A, due to their hardy drought-tolerant and deer-resistant naturalizing characteristics, which is really important when we're doing naturalized plantings. On Sheet L 301, the row of eastern red cedars is planted in the upper northern corner of the project site, just beyond the seven-foot-high chain link fence that encloses the solar farm. The first eastern red cedar is proposed to be installed at elevation 185, and then that planting extends east upward, uphill, excuse me, towards the property line to elevation 193. Therefore, we gain greater visual cover as the evergreens are installed along that higher elevation of the site. In addition to the screen planting plan, the L 301, we also developed a set of site screen planting sections, which are found on Sheet L 302. These are to evaluate, these are to evaluate the level of potential visibility of the solar rays from key observation points adjacent to the property. Looking at the sheet, we've included a locust plan in the upper right-hand corner to assist in locating where the various section lines are incurring and what direction they're looking at. Starting with Section A to A' from the Maxon Hill Road driveway entry looking east to the project, our conservative line of sight from the driveway entry indicates that there could be some level of visual permeability to the solar ray when standing at the west property line. However, the existing deciduous tree woodland and existing evergreen and herbaceous understory plantings would intercept some of the viewer's attention and provide visual distraction to the eye before reaching the first corner of the solar ray. In Section B to B', a line of sight was cut from the 48 Maxon Hill Road property, which is in the upper right corner of the locust map, looking west towards the proposed solar rays. The line of sight is taken adjacent to the private residence and extends downward through the 40-foot-wide deciduous woodland vegetative buffer and retained understory plant materials that are maintained outside of the project limit of disturbance, which includes understory shrubbery. It is highly probable that there would be limited visibility to the solar rays during the leaf-off months due to the density of the deciduous shade trees and understory growth in this area during the summer. However, in the leaf-off months, the denslering of existing tree trunks and branching, as well as any remaining understory vegetation that would be in the view, would only partially obstruct the views to the solar farm and existing work barn beyond. Therefore, it is in this area of the project that a row of proposed native eastern red cedars, which I described previously, is suggested to provide additional evergreen screening. In Section C to C', and Section D to D', the line of sight to the project is obstructed by both the landform topography and the existing Appalachian oak forest matrix. In Section C to C', the line of sight is taken from the eastern property line looking west and downward towards the solar farm through the woodland matrix, which has a greater component of evergreen understory vegetation in this portion of the site. Given the long viewing distance to the project, as well as the dense woodland cover with intercepting topology, it is unlikely that there would be significant views to the project, if at all. In Section D to D', the line of the sight is drawn from the 34 Maxon Hill Road residence, which is in the lower-left corner of the locust map, looking upwards to the east towards the project. Once again, the topography and the deciduous woodland obstructs views to the solar rays in combination with the assortment of machinery that tends to be located adjacent to the driveway and work barn in that area. It is possible that limited views to the top of the existing work barn are available from 34 Maxon Hill Road residence, although filtered through the deciduous woodland canopy understory vegetation, just as the solar rays would be filtered through that same matrix. Therefore, it is our opinion that there is limited, excuse me, there is limited visibility to the solar farm from the edges of the property and the adjacent residences due to the following. The density of the existing Appalachian oak forest that is retained outside of the limit of disturbance and within the property line provides a visual buffer to the solar rays. The solar farm has a small footprint, and the proposed addition of native evergreen screening in the area of the potential visibility from the neighboring property is a benefit to the project. If there's any questions on sort of what I've described, I'm happy to entertain those. Otherwise, I thank you for your time this evening, and I would turn it back to the team for any further comments.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Keith there, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Sertit.
Yes.
If I could just briefly bring back my engineer, Jason Gold. Jason, if you could just briefly describe the interactions and the exchange with, is with yourself and Crosman Engineering, as I'm expecting that we'll be hearing from them now. And if you could briefly just touch on some of the conditions that you and Crosman have crafted to ensure that despite the topography of the site, that there are no sediments or stormwater leave the site?
Yes, so I described many of those during my original presentation. So some of the things that were, came out of that was the stone trenches that I had mentioned. Well, the erosion controls, they were beefed up a bit. For example, we added a stone berm along the top of the steep slope to provide further control than the silt sock that was originally proposed. There's also some silt fence and silt sock, double-layer and sensitive areas that were provided, to provide additional sediment controls as well.
Jason, you've also included some limitations on the type of equipment that can be used on the site, correct, ensuring that there won't be a compaction? And then there's also a monitoring component that we've agreed to, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would defer to the board if you'd like to ask questions, additional questions of the witnesses, or if the board would prefer to defer and hear from Crosman, Crosman.
Thank you. Board members, what's your pleasure?
This is Carolyn. I, I, everybody mind if I chime in?
No, go ahead, Carolyn.
Okay, so there's an elephant in the room. And we don't have to answer to it right now, but there's a significant amount of attention brought to some of what is perceived as junk equipment on the property. And I suggest there might be an answer to that, so if we could have somebody speak to that?
Are you looking, Stephen Sertit, are you looking for the applicant to address it? Or are you looking for someone from your staff to address it?
We just need clarification on what, what, what the concerns are about the, the equipment that's collected on the property.
I could answer that for you.
Okay, have that answered, let's go.
Would you like to hear the applicant, or would you like to hear from me, Carolyn?
Oh, if the applicant wants you to answer, he's more than welcome to pass the torch. Go ahead, Ron.
Mr. Sertit. Okay.
Ron, please feel free to go ahead.
Go ahead, a couple people spoke at the same time. Yes.
Please, please feel free to speak, and then I'll, I'll be, if, if necessary, I'll respond.
Okay, thank you. No, I was asked by the, the property owner, I received a phone call Saturday, and he said that he had been posed the same questions. So I went up there and looked at what he had around, and there's a couple of small items that are going to be junked. He's got his son working on that every day. Most of the equipment that's there is serviceable construction equipment that he uses in his excavation business. When they're not used, they look like junk, but they are actually serviceable pieces of equipment that's being used. Other than that, there's, I think it was two motors sitting on the ground, sitting on blocking, four machines that he's working on. You'll notice there's a small bulldozer there, and the motor's out of it, they're doing maintenance work to it, with the idea the motor's going back into it and it'll be on the job in the spring. There's a crane there that he's gonna cut up and junk, he had planned to restore it because it's an antique, but he doesn't feel he has enough time left in his lifetime to get that job done. It's a, it's a big job for a crew, one person, it's a real big job. So that's, that's where we're going with that, and if anybody else would like to chime in, feel free. Oh, Attorney Sertit, I would just like to add that I was in construction for 50 years, so I have a knowledge of what these machines are and what they're capable of doing and why he has them. You know, I'm not just one of the farmers chiming in as a, as a favorer or person in the community.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman, that far it saves my experience in the construction arena, so I defer to you.
Thank you. Carolyn, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does, that satisfies it. It's functional equipment, there is inspection to that, but it's, it's not something that you view from the street anyway when you, when you drive by it, so. But it needs, needs to be tended to. Now, the other question I have is, looking at the plan, we know we're talking about 1.3 acres for the site, that includes the fencing that's going to contain it. It's, the, the amount of clear cutting is going to be 1.3 acres plus how much more land. What is the total footprint that is going to be disturbed for this project?
So the fence is 1.8 acres, I'm sorry, this is Jason Gold, ESS Group. The area to be cleared for the ray that's going to be grass is within the fence, that's 1.8 acres. The total overall limit of disturbance, which includes the shade tree clearing, is 4.0 acres.
And Jason, if I may, Attorney Stephen Sertit, the four-point acres include some areas that will be very minimally disturbed, correct? The prime, the 1.8 acreage is the primary disturbance area?
That's right. The difference between the two are shade trees being cut but not grubbed, so the ground cover remains.
So this additional clearing that is going to be done is, I, I'm concerned that it, doing the additional clearing could in fact create some kind of a visual impact for the, a butter. It doesn't look like there's going to be any impact from Maxon.
So?
The setback itself is not cleared, so that's outside the limits of disturbance, that remains vegetated. So all the, all the visual represent, I guess, Tara can answer this, but all the visual representations have been made takes into account this additional shade tree clearing.
Okay. Well, that's it for me right now.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Oh, wait a minute, I did have a question. Oh, I forgot. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
That's fine.
I'm, I, I'm going to bring this back to our, our last meeting this, in September, okay? I had a question for our solicitor at the time, as to whether there was a potential conflict of interest because the letter from the fire department came from within the fire department, which Mr. Spazato is a member of. And while I don't have any objection to, or, or question the confidence of that recommendation in that letter, I think what I would prefer, just to avoid any potential views of impropriety or, you know, bring more clarity, is that the, the board consider having the state fire marshal do the review? And I'll leave it there, and, you know, the board can discuss it, but that, that's my opinion, and that really is all I have now, thank you.
Okay, Sean, do you have any input on that?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's, Carolyn has addressed this, comports with my advice to the planning board as it relates to its wanting to get a second opinion in light of the fact that they believe in their, in your estimation as a planning board, that there may be in fact a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Sertit.
Go ahead, Steve.
Carolyn, defer, no, I defer to Carolyn, please.
Okay, I just, I just wanna say that it's not my opinion that there's any impropriety. I just think that to avoid any potential conflict or references to it, it would be probably in the owner's best interest if we just had a neutral party come and make the same recommendation that was made by his assistant. Thank you.
Moving forward, I think it's about time for public comment. But first, let's get a little bit of input from our town planner. Jim, do you think we've covered this adequately so that we can move on?
I, I would say so. In my memo, Mr. Chairman, I put a proposed motion for the board to consider if they feel as though all of the items have been addressed. I think we should hear from Steve Cabral from Crossman on this.
Okay, certainly, it sounds like a great idea. Mr. Cabral, are you present?
Steve, press star nine please. And now press star six please.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I'm Steve Cabral with Crossman Engineering. And Jason Gold did give a good, accurate summary of the past discussions and the design, but I will just hit on a few of our original concerns, and, you know, that, that have been addressed, as Jason said. The, the theory behind stormwater runoff being negligible from a solar field is really dependent upon an assumption that the solar panels run parallel to the hillside, so that as runoff cascades off of the panels, it does so in a manner that allows sheet flow to continue flowing over the new lawn surface. The unique feature with this site is that that doesn't occur. The panels are actually laid out to run perpendicular to the slope, so the runoff of the panels are actually going to be running up the hill, as opposed to parallel to the hill. So the concern we had was that as the rainfall cascades off of the solar panels, there's going to be a, a defined drip edge, that as the water drips off, instead of sheet flowing across the grass, it's gonna essentially take a 90-degree turn and flow in a channel, you know, down the hill. So that's why we recommended that, that the project incorporate a series of parallel stone trenches. And the reason for that is to, it's an attempt to take that channelized flow which is going to occur, and force it to sheet flow, which is the desire for runoff from solar panels. So therefore, one of the, the first conditions we had in our memo dated November 21st, 2020, is that following construction, we would like to make sure that the owner, or the owner's inspector, or the designer monitor the performance of those stone panels, and that they have to be prepared to provide additional measures if the stone channels that are built are not sufficient. Now, those, those measures could be the addition of a wider stone trenches, or adding in additional rows of stone trenches. It's, it's certainly a feature that can be mitigated, but we feel that because of the slope of this site, it's important that it be monitored and, and addressed. The other concern we had is that right at the base of the solar field, is that there's a very steep slope going down towards that existing garage. So as part of the standard O and M, operation and maintenance program, we want to make sure that the inspector also monitor the condition of that, that steep slope going down to the garage, and be prepared to take action if there's any gully in that, that The other item I'd like to note about the drainage is that we agree with Jason Gold that the one and a half acre solar field, if it, if we get a good thick grass surface beneath it, will have a negligible impact on an increase in flow towards Maxon Hill Road. Just for the record, we want to make sure that everyone understood that there's a significant hillside that drains down to Maxon Hill Road through the site, and the drainage system in Maxon Hill really cannot handle the flow that occurs today. We're saying that just in case in the future, after the site is built, someone observes that there's excessive flow in Maxon Hill, we do believe that that wouldn't be caused by the solar field alone, it's an existing condition that exists due to the topography of, of the hillside today. Another item we wanted to bring out is that we've observed over the past year or so, that there have been some contractors who, while they're building, engrading the solar field site, they do a thorough job of rubbing the, the woodland layers, and we've seen some contractors actually use paving rollers, meaning compaction equipment that you would typically use on a roadway project to compact the, the ground surface. We want to make sure that that type of equipment is not used, and that the only roller or compaction equipment that's allowed on site would be your typical seed roller that would normally be used in a yard, to make sure that the underlying soil does not get overly compacted. And of course, the reason is, if you compact the soil, you minimize the, the porosity of the soil, and you end up with an increased, an increase in runoff, more so than what's designed in Jason's stormwater analysis. And as the attorney did indicate, that was also agreed to as a condition. And last but not least is the decommissioning estimate. As we indicate in our memo, we still believe that there are a few unit prices that should be elevated. We, we believe that the decommissioning cost is understated. So that's something that we're certainly willing to work with the applicant to come up with, a number that we feel is more appropriate. Right now, the estimate for the present day value is $14,911, but we feel once prevailing wage rate to use, as well as fully loaded, forced for the equipment, that that value will, will increase. And that, that's a very quick summary.
Is that the end of your presentation, Mr. Cabral?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, planning board members, what's your pleasure?
This is Carolyn. I don't want to jump on Emily or Keith. You guys want to speak up before I go?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead Carolyn. Okay. Um, we have to talk about the salvaging that's in here, and this is a decommissioning estimate that was put together by the engineer, right? And it's during our last project discussion, there were questions about the salvage value being included or not included. So if I could ask Steve Cabral to give us a little more thought on the number that's in there.
Carolyn, do you want Steve Cabral to respond?
Carolyn, would you like to speak to Mr. Cabral?
Yeah, I, I would like some more insight as to his comfort level about that being in there, because it's, it's an assumption, and we need to feel comfortable that with the reiterations that we've gone through on other projects, that, that this is acceptable.
Oh, yes, this is Steve Cabral. Now, as I, I briefly mentioned, I do feel that the decommissioning estimate is, is on the low side, and I would like an opportunity to work with the applicant to, to refine that, that number. And again, with the, the salvage value, the same, my same concern applies. I'm not comfortable with the cost as well as the salvage value set this time. But this, this is a number that was provided by the applicant, we have not prepared an independent number on this project.
Now, if I could throw something out there, Mr. Cabral. On the package that we received from our town planner, Mr. Lanthea, it says the applicant posts an amount of $19,765 for the decommissioning, not $14,000. So there's a little discrepancy in our, on where we're going with this.
Steve, I can, this is Jason at ESS, I can just speak to that. So the number that's in Steve's memo, the 14, 9, that's after the salvage, but the 19, 765 that is in Jim's memo is before salvage. So I think that answers both questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just for the clarification, the proposed amount to go into a bond for decommissioning is the $14,911, with, with the 2.5% inflation rate after 20 years being 24. So that, that's correct, what we're, what we're considering for this project. Correct? Am I right?
Oh, if, if I may, that's...
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Hello, if, if, yeah, if I may, this is Steve Cabral again. Yeah, those are numbers presented by the applicant, but, but I'm, I'm still, I feel that they understate the cost. So I would like an opportunity, or recommend an opportunity to work with the applicant to, to refine those numbers further, to make sure that the rates used are representative of what the cost would be for the town, if the town had to subcontract this work. For example, some of the hourly rates for labor do not appear to be a prevailing wage rate that the town would have to use, or the, the fully loaded overhead costs, and the same with some of the equipment and trucks. The values, the unit values seem low compared to what we actually have to pay on other projects.
Okay, so similar to other solar efforts that we've worked here together, this is something that'll have to be negotiated once you do your review. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Lanthea, town planner. If I could interject here one second. If you notice, if you notice in my memo, I recommended that the applicant post an amount of $19,765. As was stated, that's the amount that is not including any salvage value. In the past, the planning board has not been crazy about including salvage value in there. So that is why I put in my, in my memo, the cost excluding salvage. Now, if, if the planning board does not feel, or if Mr. Cabral doesn't feel as though $19,765 is adequate, keep in mind that the planning board has the authority to increase that by 25%. So if you don't like $19,765, would, would 25% more on top of that be adequate in your opinion? And if it is, I would, I would suggest that you impose that tonight, and I wouldn't want this to be a stumbling block to approving this project.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Stephen Sertit, excuse me, Attorney Stephen Sertit, the applicant would be agreeable to the recommendations that your planner has put forth in his memo to you, in that we would put forth a $19,000 and change bond as part of this project.
So this...
Ron, I have a couple follow-up questions.
Go ahead Emily. You spoke first, go ahead.
Carolyn, we might be getting at the same thing. It sounded to me like Mr. Cabral from Crossman said that the $19,765 is likely inadequate. Um, Jim, just let us know, we could increase that by 25%. Uh, I could do the calculation real quick, but, Mr. Cabral, do you feel that that would be an adequate amount to cover the discrepancies you noted with various labor rates for all these different itemized components of the decommissioning? Or is it better to have you provide an independent decommissioning estimate to come up with, you know, some actual numbers behind this value?
Now, being an engineer that's conservative, I, my, my feeling would be, I'd like an opportunity to refine the numbers, but I don't want to be an obstacle in moving forward. I don't believe the number's going to double. But just to give an order of magnitude, like say, they're proposing 20,000, I'm just rounding to 19,700, so 25% of that brings it to about $25,000. That's getting closer within reason. If I, at, off the top of my head, I would say that the number may be closer to 30,000, if we were to break down everything individually.
Jim Lanthea, town planner, if I could interject. Steve, in, in the past, when you've done these estimates, you have included the salvage value. So I heard, I think I heard you say earlier that you've, you felt that 14, 911 is probably the number that, that you should go with, although that's a little bit low, okay? So you, now you're talking about, are you saying doubling the 14,000 to 28? Now we're getting 28 to, 28 to 30 range. But again, well, we just did the arithmetic here, 25, 125% of 19 is what, 25 something? So I, I don't...
24, 706.
Okay. Well, I, I suppose the planning board could, could, could approve this, subject to Mr. Cabral putting a definite number on it, if, if that's what you, if you trust Crossman to put a number on it. I'd hate to have to come back to the, I, I wouldn't want to have to come back to the planning board with this application, again, just be, just because of this number.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be appropriate, if we could agree on a minimum that it would be, after we go through it independently, so that we would all leave tonight knowing that it would be no less than the 25,000.
Planning board members, what are your thoughts on the 25,000?
I think what we, what I would say is, as a condition of approval, we would, a condition of approval would be acceptance of a revised Crossman estimate for decommissioning, no less than 25,000.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead Steve.
Um, I, I think that the 19,000 and change number, or 20,000 change number, is consistent with prior, with the prior, most recent approval that this board has put forth. While I, and I understand that each site is slightly different, if you look at those numbers based upon a per-megawatt evaluation, the 19 change number i- is adequate, and addresses the, we believe addresses the concerns. Um, and we would be caught, we, I, I, you know, if the board thereafter feels that they have the right statutorily to increase it by another 125% to 24,000 and change, there's, we wouldn't, statutorily, we can't object to that. So we would feel that those numbers are appropriate and consistent with other actions of the, the board. And I understand that each slight, site is slightly different, and that there's some topography on this site, but that 24,000 and, uh, number i- is certainly statutorily appropriate.
This is Jason Gold, ESS. Steve, I happen to have the numbers in front of me, if you, if you want me to just read them out. Frontier Road, I believe the approved decommissioning value worked out to $37,108 per megawatt. We're at half a megawatt. And so that actually comes out to $18,554, which is less than what the town planner is proposing. So just to put that in perspective. So just to put that in perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if, if I may, the, the difference is, as the attorney stated, every site is unique and it's not, it can't be prorated evenly because there's a, the larger the site, the lower the cost will be per megawatt. The smaller the site, the higher the cost per megawatt is, is what would be expected.
So, Mr. Cabral, what would be your, what would be your suggestion, your opinion?
It, it was my opinion that the draft motion that was made by a member sounded very good.
And refresh my memory on which draft motion that was.
I-
Oh, I believe there was-
Like a hypothetical. It was from me, Ron, this is Emily. I hypothetically said, you know, if we make a motion associated with approving this project as a condition of approval, I would say acceptance of a revised Croftman estimate for decommissioning, no less than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, now, our planner estimated nineteen thousand, seven, sixty-five, and you just said twenty-five. What about a compromise, twenty-two thousand, five hundred with the add-on that, that's an estimate?
Well, Ron, my, my reasoning on that is that our independent engineer is telling us that he hasn't had a chance to fully flesh out this decommissioning plan himself and check all the numbers. And he'd like an opportunity to do that, to ensure that the town is covered in this project in the case that the town has to undertake this work, right? So barring him doing that, we don't want to actually extend this project. We want to be able to make a decision tonight. So we want to add a condition of approval to this acceptance of the project saying we're going to have Croftman do their own independent decommissioning estimate. Because right now, we're just relying on the estimate from the developer alone. No one's checked it yet. And so Croftman's going to do that, and Steve Cabral estimates it's not going to be less than twenty-five thousand. That, you know, surely at least twenty-five thousand would cover it. And that indeed is what twenty-five percent more of the nineteen, seven, sixty-five is, which is within our, you know, purview as a board to just arbitrarily say. So that's where, that's where my numbers come from.
Okay, that's reasonable. Would you like to make a motion?
Well, I don't, I don't think we're at the point yet that we're going to do that. We probably still have to hear from the public, and there's maybe other comments. I have a couple other things to note, but, um-
This is Carolyn, I'm-
Maybe come in on decommissioning unless, yeah, go ahead, Carolyn.
I'm, I'm asking Jim for clarification. A little, a little while ago, you said that the planning board has the authority to increase the decommissioning value by twenty-five percent to, and that was in reference to the nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollar number, correct?
That's correct, Carolyn.
Or is that, okay. So, uh, we're close to that twenty-five thousand because that number would be twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. And then we would be able to work with, with Croftman to come up with a reasonable number. And it could in fact be under that twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, and Emily stating that it would be a minimum of twenty-five, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, Stevens Sertit, I think an appropriate way to do it that we could agree with is a not less than condition of the nineteen thousand. And then if the board was insistent, I, I would also want to put a cap on that as well. I think that's appropriate if we're going to put a minimum. And we can discuss what that number is based on the, what we've suggested here. But I, I think that a not less than, you having a minimum, quite frankly, I don't think we need a minimum or a top. I think we can work it out between engineers. As the history of this project has shown, both engineers have noted that they've been able to resolve the outstanding issues. So that's where I would leave it, that the two parties can confer and come up with a number. And if we're unable to, then we could return to the board to address it. But I'm quite confident with two very capable professionals that we can address that concern and, and without prejudicing either party or the, the town or the applicant in setting these kind of arbitrary caps or minimums.
So, and I'm understanding what's proposing is leave the dollar amount open-ended to be clarified or certified or officialized, that it's safe to be determined.
I think I, I would suggest that at least initially, I would suggest that initially, if the board is uncomfortable with that, then we can discuss it further. But I, I really believe that the, the most effective way to do this is to leave it up to the two engineers to resolve. And if we're unable to, then we can come back to the board. But these, the, the parties involved here have been able to work collaboratively quite well.
Okay. So, my opinion on that is- Go ahead, Carolyn.
I just don't feel comfortable putting that kind of responsibility on Croftman to negotiate a decommissioning rate. I, I do feel comfortable with Croftman doing a peer review and making a recommendation. I'm not, and I also don't want to hold this project up. I think diligent, for, for all intents and purposes, we need to do due diligence on this project as we do with all other projects. And I am comfortable with the recommendation that Emily made of having a, a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars. But, and, and then I am not comfortable having Croftman be responsible for the negotiations. We're not talking about drainage systems here. We're, we're talking about cash, and that's something that I don't think Croftman gets paid to do, to negotiate dollar amounts for the town. And if Steve Cabral feels comfortable doing that-
Just to be clear, Carolyn, I don't think that, I, your, your assessment of my motion was correct. But I don't think that in that, or that hypothetical motion, I don't think in that hypothetical motion where, where assigning negotiation tasks to Croftman, the-
No, we're not, but it's- No, 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 Emily, not in your motion. This is what Mr. Sertit is proposing. That-
Right, yeah.
Croftman work directly with the engineer to come up with that decommissioning figure. And I don't think that's their responsibility. It's not in your motion at all.
Right, okay, we're on the, we're on the same page.
Um-
Great.
Okay. Ladies, before we get into a fistfight here, what we're actually-
What?
Bandaring back and forth here is just about a week's paper as a construction worker. You know, we're putting a lot of time and effort into this. And for a company like Centrica to post twenty-five thousand dollars as opposed to twenty thousand dollars is not that big of an item. I hate to sound crude and harsh on this, but we're, we're expending a lot of energy where it doesn't need to be expended.
That's, that's a brilliant fact, Ron. That's so true.
Mr. Chairman, Stevens Sertit, if I may, in, in that vein of what you're suggesting and conferring with the applicant and Centrica, we would, because of the nature of financing, we, we, we can't have something open-ended. It's more, it's very difficult when something is open-ended. So we would be willing to agree to a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollar bond, a maximum of thirty thousand dollar bond for decommissioning costs.
Okay, does that sound- How does that sound to the rest of the planning board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly, go ahead. Hello, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay. All right, this is Sean Clough, planning board solicitor. And I just want to remind the, the planning board and the applicant that under the ordinance, this decommissioning value needs to be based off of competent expert testimony. And what we have before us is not something that can be negotiated. We need to have either the applicant's expert and/or Croftman develop a data-driven estimate for decommissioning costs. Now, from what I can hear, the planning board is trying to achieve some sort of, what I will probably inapparently call a compromise, where we can at a minimum, agree to your decommission, the applicant's decommissioning cost plus the twenty-five percent increase that the planning board has the right, under the ordinance, to set as a minimum, and allow for Croftman, who has under, with its expert testimony, indicated that it is not confident with this estimate, to come back with its own estimate. And if that is in fact higher than the estimate that you have provided, then the planning board, in its discretion, wishes to go with that. So I think, quite frankly, I agree with the chairman that this discussion is a bit overkill, and that if the planning board wishes to move forward, as a planning board member Emily has indicated, I think that that is appropriate under the circumstances. But we will, and I'm advising the planning board, not to get into discussions about negotiating maximum caps because I, I have, nor does the planning board, have any expert knowledge of what decommissioning costs ought to be. The only individuals who have that are the, the individuals or the entities that the applicant has hired, and that of Croftman. So I'm hoping that we can, I am helping with shepherding this forward. And if not, I apologize. But that is, to the planning board members, that is what I'm recommending you do, to move forward on this item. And that we not engage in setting an arbitrary cap for Croftman. It seems in all likelihood that Croftman will come into a reasonable value. But until Croftman has done its work, I don't think it would be appropriate to engage on the record that you are not going to, or you're going to limit yourself to an arbitrary cap without knowing where Croftman will come in, once it has done its due diligence.
I just want to state, this is Tolyer, senior planning clerk. Mr. Kovasik, if you would like to comment, you have to press star six. I've asked you to do so. If you do not want to make a comment, please lower your hand.
Okay, Sean. As I'm understanding it, you're, you're comfortable with the, not any lower than, but delete the, the cap, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Which I just think, I, I agree with. We don't have a crystal ball. Nobody knows what it's going to be in twenty-five years.
Correct, that's, that is my recommendation. You need to, the planning board needs to make a determination based off of competent expert testimony. We have here a bare minimum, but we have an expert who's indicated it may be more than that. We don't know what that more may be, so I don't see it be appropriate to have a cap set in any motion that you may propose and vote on this evening.
Okay, thank you. Emily, are you good with that?
Yep, I would revise my motion. I'm going to share our hypothetical revised motion, okay? Acceptance of, acceptance of a revised Croftman estimate for decommissioning, no less than twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents, which is the estimate of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars plus twenty-five percent provided by the developer.
Okay, thank you. Other planning board members, input, please.
This, this is Carolyn. Um, it, it appears to me that because we have to get this review done by Croftman, that we're not going to be able to accommodate the December sixth deadline.
Carolyn, that's what the motion, that's what the motion does. It says that we can approve it today, but Croftman is going to come up with a revised estimate, and the developer will accept that.
Well, we accept it.
Uh, okay, so the developer will accept the Croftman decommissioning, decommissioning estimate. What if that does not happen?
It is a condition of approval.
Okay. All right, we can move on, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lanthea, town planner, I, I got a question here. The ordinance, the ordinance says that the applicant shall submit a fully inclusive estimate of the cost associated with removal, prepared by a qualified engineer licensed in the state of Rhode Island, and verified by the town engineering consultant. So the only thing that hasn't been done here so far is, it hasn't been verified by Croftman. But they, the, the applicant did provide numbers here. So Croftman was never directed to come up with their own independent estimate as they have on other projects that have come before the board. So, uh, you know, we, we have numbers here by the, by the applicant. I just heard, Mr. Cabral, he pretty much went down to fourteen, nine as a starting point after, after salvage is taken into, into play. Now, in the past, the planning board has not been crazy about the estimate when you take salvage out of it. All right? So my, I guess my thought is this. If we're going to send, if we're going to send this out to Croftman now and say, okay, we want you to verify these numbers, I guess what is Croftman's starting point going to be? Is he going to start off now at fourteen, nine, eleven? And then, and then look at these numbers? I mean, is he going to include salvage or not? Okay? Because depending upon where Croftman starts off with, what number, that, that they go up from, I just wonder what, what the ultimate number is going to be that Croftman comes up with. I mean, we might, we might already be higher than what he's going to come up with. I mean, I'd like to know what he, he's going to come up with. And I think in the future, if we're going to go through this time and time again in the future, then I think when Croftman deals with, with these developers, and they see decommissioning estimates, then verify it right there. We, we shouldn't even be here, if we're going to go this, this route where we're going right now, we shouldn't even be here. We should have a number from Croftman right now. And again, keep in mind now, on, on other projects, Croftman came up with their estimate, the planning board increased it by twenty-five percent. Okay? And then on this other project that I'm thinking about, it wasn't done on a megawatt basis that I, that I compared it with. It was three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and change, which was twenty-five percent more than the estimate. And it was for thirty-seven acres. And it comes out to about ninety-two hundred dollars per acre. So we only have two acres we're dealing with here. That's eighteen, that's eighteen-four, and that's including a twenty-five percent increase in that. So I guess my, my question is, where do you want to go that's reasonable? I mean, I picked out, I picked out the high number that was given by the applicant here of nineteen, seven, sixty-five. And I didn't include salvage in it because I didn't think the planning board wanted to include salvage. They weren't happy with putting salvage values in. They, they, they want to include zero on that. Okay, fine. Is Croftman, is Croftman going to include salvage when they verify this? I mean, we don't know what Croftman's number is going to be. I'm suggesting here, and the applicant's already agreed to it, nineteen, seven, six, five, and then you can throw twenty-five percent on top of it, bringing it up to twenty-four change. I mean, I don't know- I mean, I don't know, I don't know what we're doing here tonight. Again, I think we're-
With all due respect, Jim, I asked Crossman that exactly, if the 25% more than 19,765 would be enough. And Mr. Cabral said, "Probably not." So that's why we're going this route.
Okay.
It's simple. I think we've justified the motion at least four times.
Okay.
Okay. I think, this is Carolyn, I think Sean clarified the direct for the Planning Board, I think Sean told us that we're required to have an expert review, and we need to have Crossman do an estimate. And I would hope that Crossman is going to do an independent cost analysis, and not do, use this information here as a starting point, like he's done on other projects.
Exactly.
I mean, what, there would be no value in having a peer review if they're going to use the, the outline and the information that's been provided by the applicant. And for, for what it's worth, the applicant's decommissioning plus the 25% that we're talking about could be accurate, but we know better that we need to utilize the experts like we should. And Sean, if I'm interpreting what you said incorrectly, that the ordinance requires we get a peer review, an expert review, let me know, because that's what popped out when you were speaking.
Jim Lamthe, Town Planner. So, so basically, going forward now, basically what you're saying is you want Crossman to do its own estimate for each project going forward, because they're all unique, and, and that, that's, that's what you're going to go by? Whatever, whatever Crossman comes up with, that's what you're going to go by, right? Is that what we're saying?
No, we're saying that we need-
I'm not sure that's necessary. Great.
I'm fine with that. I just want some clarity, so I, so I can, you know, you know, talk with these people intelligently. I want to know what you're going to do. I mean, either you want salvage value in there, or you don't. Let's see what Crossman comes back with. You didn't like what Crossman came back with last time. So I'm, I'm just trying to get a little bit more direction here, so that we can give other people direction.
I think that, I don't think we had any critiques of what Crossman came back with the last time.
Okay.
I think, I think what I would say, what would make me comfortable, is that, is that we do get a review by Crossman on these decommissioning projects. We continue to learn as we go along. I don't think there's any harm in doing that. It's protecting the town, it's protecting the developer as well. And I, and I, you know, unless Sean says that it's unnecessary for us to get that expert review, he indicated that we, we needed to do it according to the ordinance.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with that, Carolyn. The ordinance does say, "Verified by the town's engineering consultant," so I'm fine with that. I'm not, I'm not arguing here or anything. I just want to know, I just want some direction and some clarity. So basically, let, let's see what Crossman comes up with, whatever that number is. I'm certainly not going to give him any guidance. I'm going to say here, I'm going to, the only thing, the only thing we have to go by right now is what the applicant gave us, which you have in your packet, and I guess Crossman's going to, Crossman's going to quote, verify it in some way. I don't know. Is, what do we mean by verify? Is that going to redo it? I guess they can do whatever they want. I'd be interested to hear what Crossman has to say about it myself, and then, so do you want to come back to the Planning Board again with that number, or?
Yes.
I mean, on, on one hand, I heard, I heard somebody say that they don't, this isn't a negotiation, we're not going to leave it up to Crossman to come up with, or between the two engineers. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. So what I said was, I don't think it should be Crossman's responsibility to negotiate decommissioning with the client. That, it, it shouldn't be left for Steve Cabral and the client to sit down and come up with an agreeable figure. He's being commissioned to do a review and provide his expert opinion on what a decommissioning for this project looks like. That's it.
Okay.
You know, I, we-
All right. So basically, Carolyn, Crossman's going to come in, Crossman's going to come in and come up with their, their own estimate. Now, let me, let me ask you this question. When Crossman comes up with a number, and they bring it to us, or if, if this comes back, okay? Do you want the ability to put 25% on whatever Crossman comes up with? Because I don't know, I don't know what number, or even how they're going to make their estimate, okay? But that's what, that's what we're going to come back to the Planning Board with. We're going to come back with a number from Crossman, and then the, the option for the board to increase it by 25%. Is that what you want? Is that where we're going?
Let's hear from other people on the board. I would like to be able to do a comparison of the two quotes, and I would like to feel comfortable with this decision. But let's hear from other people on, on the board about how they see this going forward. And it should be consistent from project to project. Nobody should be excused from any step in what we're doing. And, you know, while the, the applicant reviewed the last project that we approved, the applicant didn't hear the discussion behind where those numbers came from either. We're the only people that are party to it, so let's hear from the rest of the board on this.
This is Emily. I think a really important piece of information that helps us, you know, apply what's happening right now to future projects. The key thing is that Crossman came to this meeting telling us that the decommissioning estimate provided by the applicant was low, in his opinion. He had not yet come up with his own quote, but if he had said, for example, "Oh, this seems reasonable. I checked it out, I looked over it at face value, I'm, I'm willing to accept this," then I think we'd be in a different position. We'd be having a different discussion right now. It's simply because Crossman flagged this estimate as too low, in their professional opinion, that we are moving down this road of obtaining a separate estimate from Crossman, okay? So that's, that's been consistent across all of our projects. We take the developer's estimate, we get advice from Crossman about whether it's too low, and we see another estimate from them to be able to compare. So I, I don't think we're being inconsistent in this discussion at this point. I think what, the road we were going down, and this was, again, based on the guidance received from the expert, from Crossman. He highlighted some, some line items in this estimate, specific line items that he felt would change when they did an independent estimate themselves. So we have decided, or, you know, I proposed, that we would accept Crossman's estimate in this case, because he was able to put some pretty strong bounds on what it would be. He essentially said it would be between $25,000 and $30,000, which I think we are, you know, starting to learn is probably appropriate for this project. And I'm just speaking for myself, but that's how I interpreted Mr. Cabral's guidance to us, and that's how I felt we could move forward on this project today, without having to receive a separate estimate from Crossman and compare it side by side with the developer. Because Crossman had such, you know, honed ideas about how his estimate would be different from the applicant's, I was comfortable moving forward with it. I understand if not, everyone's comfortable with that, and they want to see this project again before us, but that's, that's sort of where, where I'm landing on this. Hopefully that's helpful.
Okay. So where do we stand on this? Now, here's, here's my opinion. We've got a estimate from the developer, and typically, we ask Crossman for their opinion. We're not asking them to sit down and negotiate with these other people. We're asking them for their opinion, and it's up to us to decide where we want to go from there. Am I incorrect in that?
This is Carolyn. I feel good with that.
Okay.
And one of the other comments that I would want to make is that if, if Crossman came in and said that they're recommending a cost of $26,283, that we don't put an additional 25% on that. That if, if his number comes in, that's the number that we accept.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I feel comfortable with.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamthe, I just want, one final thing here. I, I listened to Mr. Cabral's testimony, and I kind of felt that he was ultimately resting on the $14,000 number, with, with the salvage value taken into consideration. And I, and I think I heard him say that, basically, he felt that number was too low. So I, I don't know how he's going to feel about, you know, the 19, 7, or, like he said, you know, he, I guess he's, I guess he was thinking off the top of his head somewhere around 30, or close to 30. But again, we haven't seen any numbers that he's put together yet, so I guess, I guess let's see what numbers he comes up with. But again, from, from what Mr. Cabral has done in the past, and from what I heard him just say, I think we can expect him to include some salvage value in this.
I hope not.
And, and the number that I put forth here tonight doesn't include any salvage value. So I thought that was, I, I personally, as a layperson, thought that was a conservative way to go. But let's see, let's see exactly what Crossman comes back with, whether they include salvage, whether they don't include salvage, and we'll take it from there.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, it looks like we're going in the direction where we may be tabling this, this whole project until we get some input from Mr. Cabral. Is that correct?
We'll need an extension. This, this, we'll, we'll have to have the applicant agree to an extension till the January The board has till December 6 to render an opinion on this, so.
Okay. Where do we go with that? Do we just ask the applicant for the extension now, or?
Yes.
I guess we have to ask an report now, right?
Well, just to be clear-
You have to make a decision tonight, otherwise, if, if, if he doesn't grant you an, an extension, you have to make a decision, unless you want it approved by default.
No.
And then we don't know what number we're going to talk, talk about at all, at that point, do we? So we need an extension to have Crossman do his work.
Okay. Planning Board members, do we ask for an extension? Do we go ahead and vote on this, after we hear from the, the populace of Hockington? Or what would you like to do?
My favorite-
I thought I, go ahead, Kelly. Sorry.
My favorite slip is asking the client for an extension to our, to our meeting. And if, if we can't do that, then we'll have to figure it out after that. But if, if, if the client can talk to us about the flexibility, then they'll have more to talk about after that.
Didn't we ask the applicant?
Okay. Applicant.
Even are you there?
Your input, please.
At this point in time, Attorney Stephen Surtit, we would very much like to move forward tonight, and like to draft something with the board. If we could ha, you know, we could, if we even have to have an on-the-record discussion with Crossman, then so be it. But the, we've really worked hard to be prepared and move forward tonight. The, our, the way these projects are structured, the timing is important, and we would like to try to settle on something here with the, the board this evening. We've offered some different alternatives, and, and attempted to, and would like to continue to attempt to work with the board to try to find a way to put this project, to move forward with this project. The board has a number of projects that are before it, and a very busy set of agendas upcoming, and we would suggest that the, that the, that the high-side number of the 19, of 25,000, which is just slightly in excess of the statutorily allowed 19,000 and change, put forth by a multiplier of 1.25. As, has been noted numerous times by this board, this is, to some extent, all conjecture, whether or not salvage should be included, whether it shouldn't. I think the 20, I think based on all the discussions here tonight, the 25,000 is in excess of what your planners' recommendations are, and is arguably statutorily in excess of what would be allowed. And it's something that, that is a, that is supported by competent evidence in your record. So we would, we would really like, we would think that that would be an appropriate number to move forward with tonight.
So what you're saying is you're good with the 19,765, is that correct?
No. That's not what he said.
I'm, I'm suggesting that we're, we believe that that is an appropriate value, and agree that the board has every right to increase that by another 125, by that number by 125%. And we are even willing to go slightly above that and go to the round number of 25,000, in, in an interest of addressing the board's concerns, and recognizing that this is conjecture on all parties' part. And again, that's supported by your planner's memo, and we've, and those documents have been submitted, and been included as part of this packet for some time, and, and take into account significant increase over the 14,000 that Mr. Cabral was speaking to. I'm certainly not an engineer, but quick math, that's a pretty significant increase, probably nearly double, somewhere around, you know, 150-plus percent increase.
Okay. So you're good with the 25? Emily proposed the 25?
Mr. Cabral would like to weigh in.
What's that?
Mr. Cabral would like to weigh in.
Certainly. Go ahead.
Oh, hello. This is Steve Cabral from Crossman. During the discussion, it's given me time to work out some rough numbers, and to, you know, as I originally stated, the order of magnitude that I anticipate would certainly not exceed 30,000. But going through some of the major line items that I was concerned about, I, I am, I would be confident to say that the number of $25,000 is reasonable. And so if, you know, although I don't have a document, I have reviewed the unit quantities prior to coming into tonight's meeting, and that's why in my memo of the 21st, I was able to point out specific line items that I felt were understated. But I, I can testify that a value of $25,000 would be within reason, would be a reasonable value.
Okay.
And if I were to, if I were to do a very detailed study, it would not be significantly greater than that. So again, my recommendation, after hearing the testimony and having the opportunity of going through the numbers during the discussion, I'm comfortable recommending $25,000.
Very good. Thank you. We're having progress. Progress is good. Okay. Jim Lamthe, our Town Planner, should we get some public comment? Should we look for a motion now? What would be your pleasure, or your suggestion?
So I'll just, I'll interject. So there are two people who would like to make comments on this. We are about nine minutes away from where we are supposed to adjourn. We will have to have an extension if we're going to be discussing the final item on our agenda for old business. We have additional items to refer to. They're not particularly extensive, but, sorry to interject on Jim's behalf, but I can see what's happening behind the screen, so figured I could weigh in a little.
No, thank you, Tali. I appreciate that. I was going to pretty much say the same thing. I was going to pretty much say the same thing. We have another, we have a Brushy Brook project that's, uh, that's up next, and that's why I was trying to facilitate the discussion on decommissioning here, but I guess, guess we got bogged down, but I think we're close to a motion. Um, you don't really, we, we normally do entertain public comment on, on all these projects. If we have two people, I would say, you know, provide your comments and then make a motion. I think we're ready to approve this project, uh, tonight, uh, this Maxon Hill project, so I, I would, at the very least, I'd like to come out, come out with that.
All right, thank you, Jim. Okay, public comment. Go ahead, Talia.
All right, I'm going to let, read off the last four digits. Please state your name for the record, eight, two, 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 and also press star six, please, unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau from Oldieville Road. Boy, I promise, I'm not going to talk about decommissioning. Um, good e, good evening. We've been told that this project at forty Maxon Hill Road falls under the farm viability ordinance. Section five point five dash one states, "The purpose of this chapter is to encourage farming and agriculture operations within the town by permitting, in addition to the principal agricultural activities, supporting activities which add to economic viability of the farm." The name of this farm is the Top of the Hill Farm. I have not heard any discussions about the principal agricultural activities of this farm. One of the documents provided concerning this project was a well-written letter from Mark, who is a director of butter and lives at forty-eight Maxon Hill Road. Um, I would encourage Mark and anyone else that lives within one mile of this project to do some of their own research. There was a recent study published by URI, Curry Lang is an associate professor of natural resource economics at URI. Basically, they reviewed four hundred thousand housing track, transactions, and what they found is, uh, in Rhode Island and Massachusetts, that prices within a mile of a solar array declined by an average of one point seven percent. Homes within a tenth of a mile of the installation declined by seven percent. Couple of things I've eliminated because Carolyn already discussed this, uh, talking about the conflict of interest, and I agree with that, when we have the applicant, who is the fire chief, is also, uh, the vice chair of the zoning board. Looking at the operations and maintenance plan revised eleven seventeen twenty under access and safety issues, it states no access or safety issues are anticipated because BMPs are not proposed for this project. Also, a letter from ESS Brookletter dated November nineteen, two thousand and twenty, that was to Jim Lanfer, concerning the peer review on page three, the second item, "The current proposed grading at the entrance to this site is fifteen percent. Typically, this would be considered too steep for the fire apparatus. This will need fire marshal approval. The Ashway Fire District Fire Marshal has confirmed that his review of this project will not be conducted until after municipal approval or receipt." Um, looking at the Crossman letter dated November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, the DPR memorandum from Stephen Cabral, number three, emergency access, "We recognize that determining if the layout is suitable for emergency access is within the jurisdiction of the fire, fire marshal." In the early stages of this project, I looked at aerial views of the site that were provided, and to me, it looked more like a junkyard than a farm. I don't have forty years of experience in the construction business, but my eyes told me a different story. Last Wednesday, I looked on our website, online GIS for forty Maxon Hill Road. I zoomed in, and I could not believe the number of vehicles, equipment on this property. I would suggest that you review this site, this site closely if you haven't already done so. There appears to be a crane, um, a school bus, there's several, uh, other trucks on there, and there's an awful lot of vehicles, uh, that I would suggest that you would look at. Last year, a resident gave me a copy of a notice of inspection report that our town uses, and, uh, it just has, uh, for an example, the issue was the accumulation of automobiles. If you look at the State of Rhode Island Property Maintenance Code, section three oh two point eight, talks about motor vehicles. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the important point is, section three oh two point eight states, except as provided for in other regulations, "No inoperative or unlicensed vehicles shall be parked, kept, or stored on any premises, and no vehicle shall at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or the process of being stripped or dismantled." Well, I heard tonight that they're in the process of stripping or dismantling a crane. Um, if you review the online photos again, this is what you'll see on that property. What would our rural town look like if other residents decided to have many, many inoperative or unlicensed vehicles on their property? Section twenty-two of the zoning ordinance states, "You may be fined up to five hundred dollars per day per violation and/or be subject to additional legal actions. Our fire chiefs in town should be concerned with the hazardous waste from these vehicles that are either inoperative or unregistered." I have listened to many projects that are either in farm viability, commercial, or manufacturing zones. Most times, these projects are referred to as by right. Myself and many others want these projects done right. I believe there is a conflict of interest because of the information I mentioned about the applicants. Um, I also believe there should be a site visit by our police department to determine if there are any inoperative or unlicensed vehicles. If any of these vehicles are found, all of these vehicles need to be removed before the start of any construction for solar. Section five point five dash six of the farm viability ordinance, and under farm-based service business or farm-based contracting business, you need a special use permit. Also, vehicles with a gross weight greater than thirty thousand pounds also need a special use permit. I don't know what category the Top of the Hill Farm is in, or if they have all required permits, licensing, et cetera, but I feel they should be updated. Uh, lastly, in my opinion...
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Go ahead. Excuse me, uh, Mr. Surgeon. Excuse me, Mr. Surgeon, I did not interrupt you at all. I've listened to you for almost two hours. Please be respectful and listen to me. I'm tired of your comments. In my opinion, I think the DM needs to do a site visit to determine if there are any hazardous waste from this construction equipment before disturbing any of the land. I call the state fire marshal...
Mr. Chairman, uh, point of order, we're coming up on ten o'clock, as well as we're exceeding the five-minute, uh, public comment period per person, so it may be appropriate for the board to address those matters.
Now, do you live in Hopkinton, Mr. Surgeon? I have a question. Do you live in Hopkinton?
Pardon me, both Joe and Steve. Steve, that's my role, I appreciate you taking initiative, um, but please do not interrupt any additional speakers. I would like to have a motion to continue from the planning board, and then there are two other people who'd like to make comments, Joe, so if you could wrap it up a little bit, that would be very much appreciated.
I have very little left to say, and I want to add something that was not written. I called the state fire marshal's office on Monday, and I called them again today, and I did not get a response, but after this, tonight, I will insist on speaking to the fire marshal to suggest about the conflict that appears here. Also, was not part of my written testimony, and I believe I'm less than five minutes. I do not appreciate the attorney interrupting me or any other resident when I am trying to speak. This is the second time Mr. Surgeon has done this to me. The last time I had asked the question, "Who is keeping track of all these comments made at the hearing?", and Mr. Surgeon piped in and said, "I'm sure, Mr. Moreau, you will do your research." I live in this town, I pay taxes in this town, I believe that Mr. Surgeon probably does not live in this town. I am not going to put up with that, and I don't believe our town, our planning board, or our council should put up with attorneys that act this way. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go on to the next person. Please state your name for the record. Oh, wait, actually, before that, I'd like to have the extension, and then we can go to the other two additional comments if you'd like, Ron.
Yes, good. Should we go for the motion for an extension on the, the meeting now before we do anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, planning board members, does anyone feel inclined to make a motion to extend the meeting?
Motion, extend till ten thirty.
Second.
We have a mo, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, roll with a tie.
Under the eye.
Carolyn. Light eye.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Talia, get us back on track if you'd like, please.
No, I appreciate it, thank you, Ron. I was getting a little ahead of myself. All right, so, last four digits, zero, zero, one, eight. Please press star six, and then please state your name for the record.
Um, hello, this is Barbara Capalbo from Ashway, Rhode Island.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this particular solar, um, array is being presented under the farm viability ordinance. Um, in my perusal of this ordinance, both under intermediate farm definition and large farm definition, it says it is to be actively devoted to agricultural or horticultural production. This is sylvocultural, um, anything to do with trees. Um, I don't think it's under either of the definitions for intermediate or large farm. It's also not under most of the farm product. It does say you can have some firewood, but I would assume that would be from a crop farm, and a crop farm, again, is not sylvocultural, it's horticultural or agricultural. I'm not sure that this particular solar array can come in under the farm viability ordinance, and I would assume that would be something Sean would look into. Thank you.
All right, we have...
Okay, next speaker.
Yep. Please press, uh, star six, Lynn. Uh, please state your name for the record.
Lindelup here, Maxon Hill Road. I still have some grave concerns about the water runoff.
I apologize, Lynn, you're, it's not particularly clear, could you maybe hold your phone or whatever apparatus you're using a little closer to you?
Sure, how about you? I, I still have some grave concerns about the water runoff from this property.
There, there's a lot of water on Maxon Hill. The water table's relatively high, and getting rid of trees is getting rid of a lot of the mechanisms that, to deal with the water. Just silt sleeves and shunting it down to Maxon Hill down the driveway isn't much of a, an appropriate response to the water. I live across the street from a solar farm. I raised these issues when they were building the Maxon Hill site. It's been two days since it stopped raining, and we still have water coming out of that site flooding my, in front of my neighbor's house, and flowing constantly. The, the wait-and-see attitude, once it's, it's done, I, I just find very disconcerting.
All right, Ron, we don't have any other comments.
Okay, thank you, Talia.
You're welcome.
Planning board member, uh, I believe it's time for a motion. Do we approve the, the development plan review, or do we not?
The client indicated that they don't want an extension, so if we don't accept the terms now with a motion, then by default, what is...
They get it anyway.
...will be adopted.
That doesn't make sense. But when you write...
So, when you write motion, you know, the, the, in the, in Jim's memo, he has this motion for granting development plan approval. If you disagree with that, you just vote no.
Yeah. I think we're...
Again, uh, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Stephen Surtit, we, uh, the applicant is agreeable with Mr. Cabral's most recent, uh, statements that, that, uh, a ba, a, um, bond regarding decommissioning in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars is an appropriate, um, amount.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to the planning board members. What's your pleasure?
So here's the motion. Um, the motion is that we grant development plan approval to this application, uh, of photovoltaic solar energy system at forty Maxon Hill Road, AP four lot thirty-eight, um, subject to the applicant attaining all necessary local, state, and federal approvals with the following condition, that the owner's inspector or designer be required to monitor the performance of the stone system and be prepared to incorporate additional measures if channeling occurs or if any downhill erosion results, that monitoring downhill slope be part of the operation and maintenance checklist report, that compaction of the field surface be limited to rolling by use of a standard seed roller, and that gravel and pavement compaction equipment not be allowed, that the applicant post an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in the form of cash escrow for decommissioning of the project as offered by the applicant, and we make the following positive findings, that the proposed development is consistent with the Town of Hopkinton comprehensive plan and/or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies, the granting of approval will not result in conditions inimical to the public health, safety, and welfare, the granting of such approval will not substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of the property in the surrounding area or zoning district, there will be no significant environmental impacts from the proposed development as shown on the final plan with all required conditions of approval, and the proposed development has adequate and permanent access to a public street.
Okay, all right, you have a place.
This is Carolyn. This is Carolyn. Emily?
Go ahead.
Might we include, might we include in that, that this is, uh, approval is conditioned on a review by the state fire marshal?
Oh, sure, so let me revise my motion. So I said, um, initially that we would grant development plan approval subject to the attainment of all the following condition, or the necessary state, federal, local approvals and the following conditions. I named four things in Jim's memo, I'll add a number five, that the state fire marshal complete the emergency access assessment. Thank you. Does that work for you, Carolyn?
Yes. I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. How vote? How do we vote? Roll with yes.
Carolyn is yes.
Lindelou, no.
Okay. Now, where does that leave us, Jim? Oh, Sean, it's two to two.
It's two to two.
Sean.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, and, and Jim, back me up on this if I'm, I'm incorrect, but my understanding is on a, in a tie that is not the, uh, planning board is not granting approval to the motion on a two-to-two basis.
That is, that is correct, Sean. The motion did not pass because you didn't get three votes for it. So where, so the que, next question is, where does that leave us? Uh, do you want to deny the project? Do you want to ask the applicant for an extension till the January meeting? Um, and... And, and I don't know, and I guess, you know, from my standpoint here, I guess I have a question as, as to why the planning board didn't approve it. If, 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 if all of these conditions were read, I, I guess, I guess I don't know what the planning board is looking for beyond this. What, 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 what do you need to, to grant an approval? What, what?
What are we coming back with? We got decommissioning settled. What, what else is there to talk about?
There's some pretty serious concerns raised in public comment throughout the review of this project, namely, concerns from multiple butters about stormwater control, concerns from multiple residents about the applicability of the farm viability ordinance in this case, and overall, the applicant, I saw, did not adequately show consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, okay, fine. But I'll just address two of those things. Number one, we had our engineering consultant address stormwater issues, number one. And number two, this, this project does qualify under the farm viability ordinance, okay? It, it's timber production, that's what their W2, W9s to the federal government were, were for, for the harvesting of timber. It, as Mr. Mrs. Cabalbo pointed out, it's silviculture, which is harvesting of timber. That's what, that's what they do on, on the property. We have tax, tax returns for four years from, from these people. We have a tax exempt number. They meet, we have a zoning certificate from the zoning official. This qualifies under the farm viability ordinance. Let's put that issue to, to rest right now. As far as the stormwater, Crossman looked at stormwater. We had a public comment about springs in the area relative to another project up the street, not, not so much this project. So, again, so, but if you, if you don't feel as though it, it comports with the comprehensive plan, fine. I'm not going to second guess you on that one. But I guess my question is, give, give the applicant some direction as to what this need, what this project needs to do to comport with the comprehensive plan.
Well, unfortunately for the applicant, it's a really uphill battle in town right now to comport with a comprehensive plan since we have, you know, several utility-scale solar developments within a few miles of this particular site. And we've heard from multiple residents in the description of the land use goals in the comprehensive plan don't really support industrial-scale solar development scattered in a patchwork fashion throughout the Village Vaseway and around the Exit One area, frankly. That's just my opinion, my, my reading of the comprehensive plan.
Attorney, this is Attorney Stephen Sertit. Are you suggesting that this is a utility-scale project?
No, there are multiple additional utility-scale projects planned in this area, and any solar project greater than an acre, for example, really stresses the intent of the land use and development goals articulated in the comprehensive plan of maintaining rural character when I'm, I'm thinking cumulatively. And again, I stress, it's not really the fault of the applicant or any future applicant in this area, in this geographic area. But I can't in good conscience continue to vote yes for solar projects in this particular neighborhood and location and, and believe, I can't rec, I can't reconcile that very first requirement that we need to make to make a positive finding on these proposals that this development is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I guess, can I ask the planning board if, uh?
One second. Steve, you're very heavily into the, please, you're a little further away from your face, or maybe put it down for a moment. It's very, very much interfering with communication.
Sorry, that's my internet connection. I apologize. Thank you, Talia.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, it just was very intrusive.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, can I ask the board if the board would entertain a motion to deny this application in light of the foregoing comment? Because if we don't deny it, we're, we're not approving it. If we don't deny it, where, where are we left with? Where, where are we at? Well.
That's a good point, Jim.
I mean, well, what if we make a motion, what if we make a motion to deny and that doesn't pass? Then we're, I mean, like.
Well, then, then I think at that point, at that point, Emily, we'll have to ask the applicant if they're willing to give us an extension for, for January, and I guess we'll have to come back and, and, I don't know, have a further discussion. But if we're at a stalemate, we, we only have four people eligible to vote on this thing. We don't have five. So, um, I, I really.
The applicants already told, the applicants already told us that they are not going to grant the extension.
Okay, all right, so no extension. All right, so can, do we have a motion to deny it then? Let's deny it.
Attorney Stephen Sertit, I would suggest that if there, we're always open to discussion. If there was a particular reason that the board wanted to continue it, I'm, I'm not going to put a blanket no out there, but continuing it, when we've already, we, we had an extensive discussion regarding decommissioning, we've worked, any and all of butters that have raised a direct issue over the course of the seven months that this application has been pending, we've met with, we've modified the array in light of their requests. We put in additional buffering. We are maintaining buffers regarding your project in excess of what is required in your statute. This is a site that meets all the qualifications of your stat, of a very specific statute. We've vetted this out. We spent the seven months that this project has been pending working with your engineers, as Mr. Lamphier said, and as I'm saying, what, what more could we do to vet this project out? The Maxon Hill is a, as your own engineer said, is a road that is already compromised by significant flooding, and that our, this proposed project will have no impact on that. And I think it's also important to clarify, the Fire Marshal's office, which is the office that does the review of this, has nothing to do and is wholly independent from the local fire department, which is where the owner of the property that this, the subject of this application has worked, has been a member of. So, the review that is conducted by the town is already independent of that. But I have no objection to the state fire marshal's being, office being involved, but, but the Fire Marshal's office is independent of your, your fire department. So we'd be happy, we believe this project is allowed by statute and is consistent with your comprehensive plan in that it's consistent with the promotion of agriculture and agricultural activities, which is very much in the rural nature and the rural characteristics of the town. So, while I understand there are concerns regarding solar, and solar is a political hot-button issue in the town right now, that statutorily, this project meets the requirements and is appropriate.
Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I just want to read the last sentence of the Development Plan Review Ordinance, uh, under which this project came to the planning board. In the last, under decision, the last sentence says, "Failure on the part of the planning board to act within the time period specified herein shall be deemed to constitute approval, unless the time limit is extended by stipulation with the applicant." We have seven months to make a decision on this from the date of the pre-application meeting. So if the applicant doesn't agree to an extension, and the board can't make a decision one way or another whether to approve this project or deny this project, project is approved. And again, without any kind of a decision from the planning board, I'm not, I'm not sure what the decommissioning amount is going to be to this default approval. So, I, I don't know. I'll leave it up to the board to decide what to do.
This, this is Carolyn. Carolyn, I, I want to speak to the board about why my vote was a yes. It's a yes because there is no visual impact to anybody in the neighborhood. It's a yes for, it's for agriculture. It's a yes, it's a technically acceptable program according to our farm viability. I, I've objected to projects in the past, and with my perspective, my view, my drive-by visit to the site, I thought that this is, again, one of those locations where a solar project would be acceptable versus, for instance, the one that is on Route 3, the one that you drive by and you say, oh, there's a solar project, and then, oh, there's a farm. This, this doesn't have any of the characteristics that grind my gears about the one that I have to look at every day. So that's, the direction that I went in is, is because this is private property, it is agricultural, it is a farm, there's no visual impact. Maxon Hill is a liquid mess anyway. That can't be blamed on solar projects anymore because the major ones that's up has already contributed to it. It's up to the town, it's the town's responsibility to fix those roads now. It's the town's responsibility to address whatever water there is there. So, we can continue to be angry at solar developers, but right now, the biggest problem that we have on Maxon Hill with regard to the water and the drainage is, it's now been made the town's responsibility. I don't have anything else to add. If you have any questions, let me know. But this is, those, those are the reasons that jump right out at me as to why I thought this would be a, a good program.
Oh, it sounds like we are at an impasse. Where do we go from here?
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, it's up to, it's up to the board, Ron, where you go from here. I think I just laid it out for you. We can ask Sean for his legal opinion as to where we go from here, but if.
So, sorry, Jim, uh, uh, but the way, the options that you have, since you have a tied vote, Jim has laid out, if the applicant is not willing to give an extension, then approve the project under the motion that was originally made and voted down by Emily. Or you deny. You don't do either of those, then the project under the law is approved by default. Without further analysis that I can't perform at this time, it's unclear what constraints would be placed on the applicant, other than obviously what is legal and lawful under the current ordinances and so forth. So, for the four of you who have voted there, you know, there's a decision to make. If the applicant is not willing to give more time for some consideration or discussion regarding concerns from the individuals who did not approve the project decision.
There is no incentive then for the applicant to grant us an, an extension because if we, if he, if they deny the extension, then their, their project gets approved, so that can't make legal sense.
This is Carolyn. There's no incentive to ask for an extension from where I sit because if we are granted an extension, we're still going to be a two-two vote.
So.
So, again, as the applicant, go ahead, I apologize, Mr. Chair.
Uh, no, this is Shawclough, Planning Solicitor. If, if it is the case that after this discussion that's now taken place for the past 30 minutes or so, whenever the vote occurred till now, if no one is willing to, to change their mind, regardless of what the applicant may say, or regardless of what may be done to ease some of the concerns, then yeah, there's, there's no incentive for anyone to really budge, and I guess it's just approved by default. And, and the two people who have voted against the motion will, that, that's, that's the end result of, of the planning board's decision.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, question for Sean. If, if this gets approved by default, what, would there be a decommissioning amount at all attached to this, or would we go by, with what the applicant, I mean, they provided us? That's, that's my first question. And the second thing I'd like to put some thought out there is, if the board is inclined to deny this application based upon the fact that it doesn't comport with the comprehensive plan, I guess you could do that, but I would really suggest that you put some, your, your reasons, specific reasons why it does not comport with the comprehensive plan. Because if, if you were to, if you were to deny this, it probably would get appealed to the zoning board of review on, on appeal. So you're going to have to, you're going to have to make your denial rest on a, on a firm foundation as well. So, that's, those are my two thoughts that I, I throw out there.
We will also need another.
Thank you, Jim.
Is not a failure to approve a project an essentially a denial? I mean, like, I don't see how it could be the exact opposite.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance states what the ordinance states. I just read it. Failure, failure to approve.
It's, it's, it's a no decision. It's not a fail, failure to approve or deny. It's a no decision, which automatically by default gives favor to the developer.
Well, just, it says now, "Failure on the part of the planning board to act within the time period specified." I don't know. Did you, did you act?
But we acted. The vote was an act.
Okay, well, all right.
It's a constructive denial.
We'll see what the judge says about that.
That's why we have a town solicitor.
You know, we can argue semantics all night, and it's, it's not going to prove anything.
I, I know what the judge would do. Let's put it that way.
The ordinance says what the ordinance says. If we have an issue with that, we have to attack the ordinance, not each other.
We also need an extension, please.
This is Carolyn. I'm going to make a motion that we extend the meeting for the discussion and wrapping up of, of this topic for an additional 15 minutes. And, and in the background, I'm saying, there's no room on our schedules this evening to cover any more projects. Motion to extend 15 minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that and agree. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Probably with yes.
Light, yes.
Shamsini, aye.
Dog, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, in, in an effort to, to clarify this, can we just have Sean Clough reiterate to the planning board exactly where we're at if we have a deadlock here, and, and exactly what will happen? Tell, tell the board that, please.
So my, my reading of the, the statute that we're operating under is, if you don't have an affirmative approval or denial, you will be in a position where the applicant will move forward with the project. you will be in a position where the applicant will move forward with the project. Now, if you can come, if you can begin, if you can ask the applicant for some time if there is something that that can be altered in the project in order to bring it in compliance with any of your concerns, my suggestion would be to do so. I think from what I'm hearing, the applicant may be willing to do that, and it wouldn't leave you in this very ambiguous spot. There could be an argument raised that, well, this is effectively a denial. But we're deadlocked at two-two. So it's uncharted territory, to say the least. And I don't want to represent that affirmatively a court would consider this a denial or wouldn't consider it a denial. But I think you do run the risk of having the project just move forward at given your current posture. So I think you have to think hard about how you want to to move forward. And if not, the meeting ends and we'll deal with the ramifications and get additional legal analysis if need be. I don't know if the applicant has an interpretation as to what they believe would be the result of the vote if it were to stand as it is tonight.
Why would we ask the applicant that? I'm sorry, but why?
No, the applicant has has the right to his legal opinion if he wants to put it out there. But that's that's where we're at. So. The planning board ultimately, if you, if the planning board is not going to take a vote, then just move on to.
We voted. My opinion is that the board voted and the motion failed to pass. Therefore, it's essentially a constructive denial of the motion. That's my opinion.
And that's and that's and that's fair. So, Mr. Mr. Chairman, it does not sound like there is anyone willing to put forward a motion. A vote has already been taken. It was deadlocked. And I think we're, unless the members are going to say something else, it sounds like we're done here.
Okay, I agree. Everything that was brought up against the project was was has had ample opportunity in seven months. And nothing has been brought up until after we make a motion. And we made a motion and it was, you know, voted on then. I don't know. Go ahead, Jim.
This is Carolyn.
Mr. I just want to make an observation, Mr. Chairman, that that what we're going through right now points to the the fact that we need to have five members at the at this desk who can vote. We don't have two alternates. We need two alternates, okay, sitting in the wings so they can take over in case someone is absent, in case someone has to recuse themselves. We can't, we can't operate on these applications with four with four people. We can't run the risk of having a deadlock. We we need, we need people to step up and come out to the planning board.
This is Carolyn. I'm I, we need, we need firm reason for the denial. We went through the project together as a team. We picked apart things that did that we didn't like. And we have to have a reason for that denial. And that's up to Keith and Emily because Ron and I have already looked at everything and we agreed with the motion that was presented. So if we have two no votes and we're in a deadlock, just one more opportunity. Let's let's clear this out. Keith, you didn't chime in about why you were voting no. Maybe you could help sway one of the board members in your direction. And that this is, this is what the conversation should be had right now.
Well, I tell you what, in the name of Christmas spirit, I'll call it, in the time of the day, let's cast our votes again because I've been felt guilted and shamed. And I just want to, I don't want to put the whole town in a position of this ambiguity and all that. So let's just cast our votes again.
You're not being shamed. No, there's no shame here.
Yeah, there is. Let's just cast our votes again, and I'll I'll say yes. If we all vote, and then we'll be done with this for tonight and put this to bed. I I don't like the, again, where it just the the direction that this is going to go in any precedence that's going to set for other things. You know, I've been back and forth on this all the way through. And I really side with some of the public comments that I'm hearing. And that's where my vote originates, is no, and the comments that Ellen and Emily made. And I I agree with that, but.
Okay, then.
Well, it doesn't sound.
Shall we vote again? Or should? Whoever's speaking, go ahead. Go ahead, speak. Go ahead.
It just doesn't, it doesn't, it to me, it doesn't, it it's not fair. It's not ethical to have a board member change his reason because he feels that he's in a difficult place.
That's where, that's where the conversation went. Nobody's trying to talk either one of you two into saying no, but you're trying to talk us two into saying yes.
No, I I I asked, I specifically said, Keith, chime in. Maybe, maybe, you know, you guys are talking. Maybe you have something to offer to people who voted yes.
No.
I'm not trying to shame you. I'm just trying to say, let's all hear what everybody has going on. And I don't know.
Okay, people.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, if I can just say one thing, let's let's consider the old adage, the lesser of two evils. And let's consider where we're at from a practical standpoint. Do you want this thing to get approved by default? Or do you want it to get approved with the motion that that didn't pass? Because one of those, one of those two is probably going to happen. So pick the lesser of two evils.
If it's going to pass anyways, then I'll change my mind and say yes. And then we'll have some direction at least. That would be the reason for me to change my vote is that at least the conditions that we set forth will apply versus just having this deadlock vote and the conditions don't apply.
Okay, then let's have a, let's have, let's have our vote again. Is everybody in agreement to having a vote again? And by everybody, I mean Sean and Jim.
That's fine with me, Ron.
Okay, Prellwitz, yes.
Oh, wait, wait. Is someone making a motion? You need a motion on the floor.
It's the original motion that Assembly made.
Yeah, well, who is, who's making that motion?
We have to make the motion again.
Yeah, we will follow this procedurally correct here. And let's have a member make the motion, whether it it could be, it could be any member. But whoever's going to do it, you can simply say that you wish to put forward the motion that was presented by Emily. So you don't have to do all the language. Or you can read the language. Up to you.
We don't, we don't need to repeat it. This is Carolyn. I would like to make a motion that the planning board has the second vote on the motion that was presented earlier by Emily.
Yeah, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Prellwitz, yes.
Light, yes.
Underlow, yes.
Shomshini, no.
Okay, we have three to one vote. The motion passes. And I think it's time to move on. Jim, should we just have a motion to to end? How would you like to word that? Is it appropriate to just go ahead and do that and move all our rest, the rest of all of our work to another time? Or should we go ahead and keep going?
I I think the board wants to close it for this this evening. And I guess we'll have to move Brushy Brook to January. The last item on the agenda is a simple administrative thing. It's an administrative subdivision that I approved. So we can do that. That's that's quick enough. But then we have a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Carolyn. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Prellwitz, yes.
Underlow, yes.
Light, yes.
Shomshini, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And our next meeting will be in January. Let me look my calendar.
January 6th, 2021.
January 6th, 2020. Thank you, Talia.
You're welcome.
And with that, we'll see you guys in January.
All right. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all the members and public.